Supervisor Christie is participating remotely. Supervisor Scott is absent.
Yeah, and thank you for announcing that. Supervisor Scott is attending a funeral of his friend's father that he's known for over 30 years. So he won't be in attendance. And then Supervisor Christie, if you all noticed, there was a delay. And so when we get to voting, if you want to just put your hand up, whether yea or nay, I can verbally say that. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have... All right, so we have the pledge of allegiance that's going to be read by Judy Cooper. There she is. She's a procurement officer in the procurement department. I'm gonna brag a little bit about you for a second, if that's okay, Judy. Judy has been with Pima County for almost 29 years. She served as a corrections specialist for the sheriff's department for 22 years, and then joined procurement department in 2016, and is currently a procurement officer in the design and construction division. Judy has served on the ECAP steering committee since 2019 and is currently committee chair. She loves this program because it allows her to work with an organization that raises over $265,000 annually to affect positive change in our community. Thank you, Judy, and thank you for being here to lead us in the pledge.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Judy. And now we have the land acknowledgement statement. It's gonna be offered by Marcelino Flores, Pima County Community and Workforce Development Department.
Yo soy Tanyalu, deje madre, de valo macaitam, we can chew the capo, que chele kayamachu. Ina pohuni kechya, leos teyapo, itamai teyapo, kenela kayamachu. Good morning, Honorable Chair Grihalva, esteemed supervisors, and Madam Administrator. My name is Marcelino Flores, and I'm a proud county employee. I work in community and workforce development. I'm a member of Basque Aki tribe, and I am bound by the land and by ceremony to the brothers and sisters of Thorotham Nation, Cherokee Apache, White Mountain Apache, Mescalero Apache, Hiller River Indian Community, Salt River Indian Community, Akchin Indian Community, and the Colorado River Tribes of the Mohave, Chimalavi, Hopi, and the Dune. Thank you, Chair Grihalva, and Pima County Board of Supervisors, for adopting the land acknowledgements and for your continued commitment to begin these readings with these words. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of Thorotham Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Basque Aki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you for all that you do. Yo soy show good des, amigo.
Thank you, Marcelino. I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Jesse Campagna. He's an epidemiologist with the Health Department, who collapsed in his office on August 22nd. Coworkers, including staff members who are doctors, heard the noise and rushed to provide potentially life-saving care, including the use of a defibrillator and CPR. But unfortunately, nothing could be done. Campagna passed away at 50 years old in his office, and he leaves behind a wife, Audrey, and his parents and sister. We send our condolences to the family and everyone that worked with Jesse, friends and coworkers who are mourning his loss, as described by Dr. Teresa Cullen, Health Department Director. He was a brilliant epidemiologist, and he was driven to make the world a better place. So if you can ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now we'll move on to pause for pause, where we have an in-person guest.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Kaylee. I'm the Public Information Officer at PAC. And today I brought with me JR. I've brought a bunch of youngsters lately, so I thought maybe we'd give some love to the seniors. He's about seven years old. He's been at PAC for a little while now. The big dogs often tend to get overlooked, and so do the seniors. But a good thing that I always like to tell people about seniors is that they're the good guys. They're not gonna chew up your shoes. They're not gonna go to the bathroom in your house. They're often kind of the easiest dogs to adopt, even though people don't think of it that way all the time. So we've got several seniors like JR at the shelter. We also have 482 other dogs. So if anyone's interested in a dog, we'd love to see you for foster or adoption. And of course, we have lots of cats as well. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you so much. JR, let's zoom in on JR. Who needs a forever home? Cutie patootie. All right, so we have several proclamations today. One of the... Our first one is gonna be a presentation of proclamation to Cheryl Steinberg, Political Advocacy Director, and Michael Roberto Ruiz, Communications Director for Mi Familia Vota, proclaiming the day of Tuesday, September 19, 2023, to be voter registration day in Pima County. I'll move the item. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. And if I can have you join me down here? Thank you so much. Put it on. Put it on? It was? Nothing? If you know it. Oh, it's that, please. Can I pop you on another one? No, I'll just go over here. Okay. Sounds like a plan. Is this on? Okay, great. Okay. So whereas National Voter Registration Day since 2012 has been a national holiday on the 4th Tuesday of September to celebrate our democracy, and whereas National Voter Registration Day is a civic... is a day of civic unity, an opportunity to set aside differences and honor the voting rights and privileges we have in the United States. And whereas Pima County, Mi Familia Vota, and the One Arizona Coalition, the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson, and the YWCA of Southern Arizona, the Urban League, and the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, among others, support the informed and active engagement in democracy that voting represents. And whereas Pima County and the civic organizations encourage everyone to register to vote and to help family, friends, and neighbors to register to vote. And whereas an objective of Pima County and the civic organizations is to ensure that everyone registered gets involved civically for the good of our shared democracy and in elections to follow. And whereas Pima County and the civic organizations encourage media and social media outlets to educate Pima County residents about the importance of registering and voting and to inform them about how and where to enjoy these democratic privileges. Now therefore, be it resolved at the Pima County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaims the day of September 19, 2023, to be voter registration day in Pima County, passed and adopted this 5th day of September, 2023. Do you want to say anything? This is awkward. We're gonna try to fix this in a minute. But you're the first one. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna... Here, we'll go this way.
Yeah.
And I'll move this.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for being here. You all are being very civically engaged. So awesome. Yeah, it's an honor to receive this. On behalf of Mi Familia Vota, we're a nonpartisan nonprofit, and we know that our country is an example of democracy for the world, and we have to take great pride in that. And we need to always be working to make sure that our democracy is inclusive. And that's what we're here to do. So thank you all for being here and continue being civically engaged and bringing more of your friends and family along with you in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Did you get a picture? Okay, we're gonna have to move over here, though, eventually. I don't... Yay! Oh, look at you. We have seventeen. Okay. All right. And our next proclamation is a presentation of a proclamation to Fred Martinez, the manager, Gil Federico, board president, and Vince Amparano, treasurer, historic El Casino Ballroom, proclaiming the days of Friday and Saturday, September 19th and 10th... Or, I'm sorry, September 9th and 10th, 2023, as a time to recognize and celebrate the Latin American Social Club and Casino Ballroom. I'll move the item. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay. We're working. All right. Okay, you wanna come up? I will give it to you. Oh, no, you're gonna read it for me. Yay, okay. Here you go. I have recruited my friend Raúl Aguirre, a longtime supporter of El Casino Ballroom. You wanna hold this? One of you grab it. There you go.
Grab the frame.
Here, you grab the frame. There you go. That's yours. Okay. And I'm gonna hand that to you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Raúl Aguirre. I'm a volunteer with the Latin American Social Club. And a long, long time ago, they also gave me my scholarship to the University of Arizona. They were the first group to really see a lot of talent coming out of South Tucson, and very proud of that. And of course, we continue to give back because we think it's so important. And they're celebrating 75 years of being in our community. We call it "El Corazon de la Comunidad," the heart of our community, because they do so much benefit. So thank you for being here and listening to this proclamation. Whereas the Latin American Social Club and Casino Ballroom has played a key role in the empowerment of our community in the education, civic, social, and artistic arenas by being the center for the promotion of Chicano, Latino, and African-American music with such great performers as Little Joey La Familia, Rey Camacho, Rítmosiete, Los Lobos, Duke Ellington, Tito Puente, Albert Gallegos, Latin Breed, Pérez Prado, the king of the mambo, you might remember, Chabi Cheker, Black Cat Sideco, and so many more. Whereas the Latin American Social Club and Casino Ballroom has been instrumental in founding a college scholarship that played a vital role in sending some of the first generation of Chicano students from Tucson to the University of Arizona and other colleges, as well as raising thousands of dollars for local community organizations that has impacted its economic and civic engagement growth. And whereas original board members Adolfo Ostanao, Benjamin Jacobs, and Ramon Ziqueros built the ballroom in 1947 and sold it to the Latin American Social Club in 1968 with Raúl Butch Martinez, which is Fred's dad, serving as the first manager from 1968 to 1975. Martinez returned in 1991 after the roof collapsed to work with his son Fred and community members Frank and Vince Amparano, John Hernandez, Lee Smith, Jesús Gastelum, Hillary Martinez, Ed López, and many other unsung volunteers who reorganized and rebuilt the ballroom and reopened it in 2000. Today, the leadership of board president... Under the leadership of Board President Gil Federico and also working with our friend here as well as part of the board, they continue the mission of service for tuxorenses of every walk of life. And whereas the Latin American Social Club and Casino Ballroom are the heart of the community based out of Barrio Libre in the city of South Tucson, and the ballroom has been recognized by our community as an important heritage site to be preserved and honored. And whereas Tucsonians and local leaders recognize the Casino Ballroom as a connector to Tucson history, culture, and heritage for the younger generations. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Saturday and Sunday, September 9th and 10th, 2023, as a time to recognize and celebrate the Latin American Social Club and Casino Ballroom and encourages everyone to continue to support the Casino Ballroom and its goals and objectives.
Gracias. Can I say algo?
Somebody said something.
He said it all.
Okay.
No, no, está bien.
We wanna thank the Board of Supervisors. Thank you all for recognizing us. It's a great honor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now we're on to item seven. Presentation of proclamation to Matt McGlon, Community Outreach Coordinator, Pima County Office of Emergency Management; Savannah Martinez, Emergency Manager, City of Tucson; and Mariko Tippett, Vice Chair, Community Wealth Builders, American Red Cross, proclaiming the month of September, 2023, to be preparedness month. I'll go ahead and move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you.
Test. Oh, good. All right. Whereas, September has been designated as National Preparedness Month to encourage all Americans to be prepared for emergencies in their communities, and whereas National Preparedness Month incorporates a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to inspire and remind citizens to plan and prepare for natural disasters or other emergencies in their homes, schools, businesses, and communities. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of Pima County, and everyone should make it a priority to learn about risk factors and protect themselves against possible injuries, property damage, and economic losses that often result from disasters. And whereas during the month of September, the Pima County Office of Emergency Management, along with community organizations active in disasters, the faith-based community, our public safety partners, and other local, tribal, private, and volunteer agencies will engage in activities to educate the public about the importance of being prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of September 2023 to be Preparedness Month, and shares that the theme of the National Preparedness Month 2023 is preparing older adults for disaster, specifically older adults from communities that are disproportionately impacted by all the, by the all-hazard events which continue to threaten the nation. The Board encourages all county residents to take proactive steps to plan for any situation, including signing up for myalerts.pima.gov, and confirming that insurance policies cover hazards such as intense storms, flooding, and wildfires. Additionally, it is recommended that people learn CPR, first aid, and other life-saving skills, and take useful safety steps like shutting off utilities. Promote family and community disaster planning now and throughout the year. It is crucial to prepare in advance to ensure Pima County is resilient and ready for disasters. Passed and adopted this fifth day of September 2023.
So some of our partners were not able to join us today, but we do have Savannah Martinez from the city of Tucson. She's their emergency manager. And Jennifer McDowell, Eddie Lopez, and myself, Jim Fisher, from the Office of Emergency Management for the county. Chair Gahala, members of the board, and Administrator Lesher, thank you very much for passing this proclamation. We would like to stress to the citizens of the county that now is the time to prayer for an emergency, not when the emergency is happening, and we have seen time and time again, emergencies happen very quickly. Take Maui as a very recent example. In the blink of an eye, that town was gone. The time to prepare is now. We encourage all the citizens of our county to go to myalerts.pima.gov to sign up for emergency notifications. We do not send out fluff on that. It is emergency notifications. If you receive a notification through that process, it affects you in your area, and you should take the action given in that message. Thank you. And Savannah, would like to say some things.
Thank you. I just want to, I'm super grateful for the collaboration and partnership that the city of Tucson and Pima County emergency management teams have with one another. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for passing the proclamation to bring awareness on being prepared, and here's to National Preparedness Month.
Thank you. Now we're on item eight, Presentation of Proclamation to Felipe Garcia, President and CEO, Marisol Bindiola, Senior Director of Multicultural Marketing, Visit Tucson, Rafael Barcelo Durazo, Consulado de México in Tucson, and Diane Frisch, Director, Pima County Attractions and Tourism, proclaiming the month of September 2023 to be Hispanic Heritage Month. I'll go ahead and move the item. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Are we on? Yes. Oh, there we are. Okay, because I have a lot, we have a lot of proclamations today, I've recruited some help in reading some of the proclamations, and so the top is for, there's the written.
Okay.
Who wants to start? Felipe? Okay.
Very good.
And then we have this proclamation in English and in Spanish.
Proclamation, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States started out as Hispanic Heritage Week, which was established by an act of Congress in 1968. Then, in 1988, expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th, in honor of Miguel Hidalgo y Costilla, called to arms that launched the Mexican War for Independence. And whereas, the Hispanic heritage of Southern Arizona dates to the missions of Father Eusebio Quino, who founded Mission San Javier del Bac in 1692, and whose footsteps were followed by the governments of Spain and later a newly independent Mexico before the land became United States territory with the Gadsden Purchase in 1854. And whereas, descendants of those who lived in Tucson during Spanish and Mexican periods, Hispanic and Native American carried forward the cultures and traditions that are alive in the region today. And whereas, Hispanics compromised about a third of consumer spending in Tucson, about a third of small business owners, about two-fifths of the overall population, and more than a third of Pima County's workforce. And whereas, Hispanic influences in Tucson's food traditions played a key role in UNESCO's 2015 invitation of Tucson to its prestigious creative cities network as a city of gastronomy. And whereas, Tucson welcomes international audiences for events unique to the entire world, like the All Souls Possession and the International Mariachi Conference. And whereas, Visit Tucson created the Viva Tucson Initiative, organized events in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month 2023, including a traditional Mexican fiesta at the Plaza of the Tucson Convention Center, and the Free Mexican Independence Day concert hosted by the Council of Mexico in Tucson, thank you, Council, and the Linda Ronstadt Music Hall, conducted by Venezuelan director José Luis Gámez, and featuring songs performed by the Tucson Symphony Orchestra and the Mariachi Astlan de Pueblo High School. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 to be Hispanic Heritage Month, and calls upon everyone in Pima County to celebrate the Hispanic heritage and recognize the extraordinary impacts on Hispanic people and on communities, economy, institutions, and cultures. Passed and adopted this 50 days of September of 2023. Thank you. Do you want to have council?
Thank you for the opportunity to have this read in Spanish. Muchas gracias al Junta de Supervisores, a su presidenta. El mes de la herencia hispana en los Estados Unidos empezó como una semana de celebración de la herencia hispana, que fue establecida por una ley del Congreso en 1968, y luego, en 1988, se expandió al mes de la herencia hispana, del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre, en honor al grito de dolores de Miguel Hidalgo y Costilla, que empezó la guerra de independencia de México. La herencia hispana del sur de Arizona se remonta a las misiones del padre Eusebio Quino, quien fundó la misión San Javier del Bac en 1692, y cuyos pasos fueron seguidos por los gobiernos de España, y luego, por el recién independizado México, antes de que la tierra se convirtiera en territorio de Estados Unidos, con la compra de Gadsden en 1854. Los descendientes de quienes vivieron en Tucson durante sus periodos español y mexicano, hispanos y nativos americanos llevaron adelante las culturas y tradiciones que están vivas en la región hoy. Que los hispanos representan aproximadamente un tercio del gasto de los consumidores de Tucson, alrededor de un tercio de los propietarios de pequeñas empresas, alrededor de dos quintas partes de la población general, y más de un tercio de la fuerza laboral del Condado de Pima. Y considerando que las influencias hispanas en las tradiciones gastronómicas de Tucson lograron un papel clave en la invitación de la UNESCO en 2015 a Tucson a su prestigiosa red de ciudades creativas como Ciudad de la gastronomía. Y por cuanto Tucson da la bienvenida al público internacional para eventos únicos en el mundo entero, como la procesión de los difuntos y la Conferencia Internacional de Mariachi. Y por cuanto Visit Tucson creó el programa Viva Tucson, iniciativa y eventos organizados en reconocimiento al mes de la herencia hispana 2023, que incluye una fiesta tradicional mexicana en la plaza del centro de convenciones de Tucson, y un concierto gratuito del Día de la Independencia de México organizado por el Consulado de México en Tucson, ubicado en la Linda Ronstadt Music Hall, dirigido por el director venezolano, José Luis Gómez, con canciones interpretadas por la Orquesta Sinfónica de Tucson, y el Mariachi Astlan de Pueblo High School. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que la Junta de Supervisores del Condado de Pima por la presente proclama el mes de septiembre de 2023 como mes de la herencia hispana. Y hacer un llamado a todos en el Condado de Pima para que celebren la herencia hispana y reconozcan los impactos extraordinarios de los pueblos hispanos en nuestras comunidades, nuestra economía, nuestras instituciones, y nuestra cultura. Aprobado y adoptado este día 5 de septiembre de 2023. Muchas gracias.
Just want to say something.
Adelita, thank you so much. Muchas gracias, Board of Directors in Pima County. Thank you so much for this proclamation and for celebrating the Hispanic heritage, culture, and history of the region. Thank you so much, and viva Tucson.
Thank you. Okay. On the addendum number one, we have a presentation of proclamation to Dustin Williams, Pima County School Superintendent, proclaiming the day of Thursday, September 28th, 2023, to be Legendary Teacher Day, and we have, Dustin is here, along with Michael Schwanenberger from NAU to accept the proclamation, if y'all can come up, and I'll go ahead and move the item. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you.
Okay, proclamation number like 11 or something. Sorry. So, whereas, the citizens of Pima County believe we have all had special teachers that made a significant difference in our lives, and whereas, the citizens of Pima County recognize that those teachers demonstrated unique skills, allowing them to transform their deep content knowledge into life-changing student learning, and, whereas, the citizens of Pima County highly value the caring family culture created by those teachers, and whereas, the citizens of Pima County understand that we often do not fully recognize and understand the profound influence teachers have on our future until we have lived our formative years, and whereas, the citizens of Pima County realize the importance of taking time to fully recognize the legendary teachers in our lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Thursday, September 28th, 2023, to be Legendary Teacher Day in Pima County, and encourages all Pima County residents to take time on this day and contact the legendary teacher from your past and express your gratitude for the difference they made in your life. Passed and adopted this fifth day of September 2023.
Thank you, Board, Board members. Thank you very much for this proclamation, Dustin and everyone out there. And I would ask you just to think for a minute, who is a legendary teacher that made a difference in your life? We've all had them, and hopefully more than one. And what we're asking everyone, I representing Northern Arizona University, my colleague, Dr. Nick Clement, who started Legendary Teacher Day about six or eight years ago, and it really has spread nationally, but to take a moment and think about a legendary teacher in your life, and how they've made a difference, and if they are still with us, send them a note thanking them. Take the time to do that. Look them up. If they are not, say a prayer for them, because we have all had them. And I want to tell you just about one legendary teacher that I had. His name was Ash Silverberg, and he was an English teacher at Palo Verde High School, and I had other teachers who were legendary before him, but when I came up here thinking about it, Ash Silverberg, I had him for sophomore English, and I had him again for senior English. And I don't think that I was a very good writer when I came to high school, but he said I was. And I remember the first paper that I got back, there were so many red marks on it, I thought he cut himself. But he said, no, I have high expectations for you. You are a good writer. You need to believe in yourself, and, and you will be. And I became better by the time I was a senior. And it's really my writing skills. I go back and attribute to those before him, and also to him. And I, you know, I am successful in where I am today because of Dr. Silverberg and all the teachers I've had. Do we have any, probably don't have any teachers here, but have any retired teachers? Please, on behalf of myself and teachers, stand up and let's thank them. And I know that being a teacher, you are legendary to at least one student, if not a lot more. So thank you for allowing me this time.
I just want to say a couple things. Madam Chair, members of the board, Administrator Lesher, even Sam Brown over there. This is a really special day because we know in the education profession, there's a, there's a lot of discussion in our communities. And the number one thing that we can do is increase and advocate for our teachers and the profession. And this is a really good way for you to get involved. You can go to Legendary Teacher Day and Google it, and you can go ahead and pay a tribute and tell us your story. That would be really, really important for maybe that teacher that made a difference in your life, or maybe advocating for a teacher that keeps them in their profession. Thank you very much for taking the time today, and thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. You sure say? You don't have one?
No.
Oh, okay. I saw a teacher in the back that didn't stand up, Steve Holmes. I see you. Uh huh. Yeah. And since we're talking about legendary teachers, such an opportunity. John Hess at Pueblo High School was one of my legendary teachers, and Hope Lada at Hollinger. Amazing. Anyone else want to say? No? Okay. Alrighty. Okay, next we have addendum item number two, Presentation of Proclamation to Dustin Williams, Pima County School Superintendent, proclaiming the day of Sunday, September 17th, 2023, to be Constitution Day and Citizenship Day in Pima County. I'll go ahead and move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you.
All right. Yellow stickies, I hate them. Proclamation, whereas the Constitu-, oh, I want to thank Elizabeth Moll, am I pronouncing your name correctly, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you so much. And Elizabeth, why don't you join us?
Go on.
Ooh, I like your pink tennies.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas, the Constitutional Congress of the United States of America signed the Constitution on September 17th, 1787, and submitted it to the states for ratification. And whereas, the United States Congress in 2004 designated September 17th as U.S. Constitution and Citizenship Day. and Citizenship Day to recognize the signing of the Constitution and to celebrate all those who have become US citizens and whereas New Hampshire was the ninth state to ratify the Constitution of the United States of America on June 21st, 1788 making the Constitution the supreme law of the land and Virginia was the tenth of the fourteenth states to ratify the first ten amendments to the Constitution known to us as the Bill of Rights on December 15th, 1791 thereby meeting the new Constitution's requirements that any changes be ratified by three quarters of states and that by adding the Bill of Rights to the Constitution it ensured that our nation's founding document specifically protected the rights and the liberties of all the people in the United States and whereas the Constitution was last amended on May 7th, 1992 demonstrates we're finally in the 20th century here demonstrating that throughout its 236 years of existence that it is a living document subject to change as deemed necessary by the will of the majority of the states in our federal republic and whereas the Constitution is the bedrock of American freedom, justice and liberty and is the oldest national constitution in the world and whereas John Jay, the first Chief Justice of the United States Supreme Court stated every member state ought diligently to read and to study the Constitution of this country and teach the rising generations to be free by knowing their rights they will sooner perceive when they are violated and be better prepared to defend and assert them and whereas all citizens and non-citizens of the United States should strive to not only read the Constitution but understand how its articles and amendments oversee and affect the governance of our nation and whereas all of Arizona's schoolchildren should learn and celebrate the laws liberties and freedoms of our great country and also learn about how the Constitution's changes over time have ensured that all people regardless of condition or circumstance are entitled to the equal protection of the law now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Sunday, September 17th, 2023 to be Constitution Day and Citizenship Day in Pima County and urges all Pima County residents to learn more about the Constitution which was created to make our nation stronger set standards for justice keep the peace at home provide for our common defense promote our general welfare and make sure the blessings of liberty continue for ourselves and our descendants passed and adopted this fifth day of September 2023
Thank you very much I would first like to thank the board for taking what I said and doing something with it doing the proclamation and I think we have an excellent representative accepting this proclamation I'd also like to thank Amber Matheson who's head of the library system in Pima County she ordered a thousand pocket constitutions to give out at the library she also is doing a blog writing on Constitution Day and asking that each of the libraries do some type of activity for Constitution Day we also went to each of the school districts in Pima County and spoke to the school boards they were very enthusiastic about having the school district do some activities on Constitution Day and I have asked that our superintendent give just a brief reply on what each of the school districts are doing so that I can present that to our governing board
Madam Chair, members of the board, Administrator Leshur and Deputy Brown, thank you Supervisor Bronson for reading this also I'd like to thank Supervisor Scott who brought this to my attention as well the rights of our citizens is extremely important for all of our citizens but as we see our new youth voice come through we want to make sure that they have the tools and the directions for how to speak but how to make action happen and I think speaking is good and our voice is important but without having action behind it this is really where our Constitution can come in and do that so I thank everyone here and we look forward to partnering with the schools and thank you for putting this forward thank you very much
Thank you Thank you now I'm gonna call on our clerk to list off the changes to the agenda or modifications
Okay on the regular agenda page four item 16 elections
Oh wait hang on we can take a pause real quick to let people go I know there's a lot of thank you so much thank you
Okay on the regular agenda page four item 16 elections vote centers this item will be heard at a time certain of 10 a.m. on page five item 19 human resources unfinished business from July 11th and August 8th the revisions to merit system rules the county administrator requests this item be continued indefinitely page six item 31 it is a contract county attorney Tahoma Odom Nation this item will be heard at a time certain of 11 a.m. on page seven item 37 a contract real property American battery factory this item will be heard at a time certain of 11:30 a.m. and on the addendum page one item three executive session regarding the Southwest Gas Corporation's offer of judgment this item will be heard at a time certain of 12 p.m. thank you
Thank you okay so if I don't hear any objections we're gonna go ahead and move forward with making those agenda adjustments and now we're on to call to the public and as a reminder we're gonna start this call to the public and then break at 10 o'clock for that time certain item and citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety decorum and good conduct any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the sergeant at arms if directed by the chair such person may be barred from further audience before the board unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feet whistling yells and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair who may direct offenders from the hearing room how many do we have 14 so that means that every speaker will have three minutes we'll start with Shirley Ricard Kathleen Faber and Ralph Polo I'm sorry and Susan Kelly Ralph Polo is after
Good morning Board and Chairman Grahalva, Comrade Grahalva, I'll be recounting the hazards of 5G again today if you recall from my previous presentation the FCC is a captive agency that's run by former AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and Verizon executives they and their industry lobbyists serve to assist representatives in writing bills which are abundantly advantageous to their former bosses captive yes recall that they've neglected to upgrade their standards since 1996 for those of you lacking basic math skills that's three decades of neglect the sad thing is that they and you care nothing about our safety our health nor our happiness HB 3557 and HB 4141 are poised to strip your own regulating powers you're going to be prevented from making future profits from application fees and protecting regulations once again you failed to keep your own children safe by scoffing at implementing a protective ordinance which was recommended to you five agencies five Gs the agencies are implementing tactics of misrepresentation fraud and deceit in promoting their products radio waves transmitted by smart meters don't pose a health risk right that's what they're telling us that's what all the ad campaigns say in reality smart meters at close range emit five to forty micro watts of RF radiation per centimeter squared pulsing overlaps result in a nearly constant flow of radiation from these harmful meters what does this look like to you personally maybe you won't personally experience bothersome symptoms but what side effects will your school aged children experience Adalita when they start to exhibit the harmful and often permanent effects of 5G microwave radiation you'll harken back to my warning and rue the day that you disregarded this advice by then it would be far too late to save them from suffering and the blame will be squarely on your shoulders and those of this assembly stress agitation anxiety irritability concentration memory and learning problems disorientation dizziness and balance problems fatigue muscle weakness and physical weakness headaches sharp pain pressure in the head ringing in the ears skin problems including rashes and facial flesh and arthritis body pain sharp stabbing pains sinus problems nosebleeds urinary problems nausea like symptoms leg cramps neuropathy just to name a few deal with it
Kathleen Faber
Good morning Board, thank you for allowing me to speak again today we are having an election come up November 5th a special election to make the town veil a town or a city of veil and we have been asking that people reconsider or the board reconsider what was submitted to allow this to go through and we have lost to this point so I just want to clarify that we want people that love veil to vote no until the committee that has put together this incorporation program has not been transparent and they have not been truthful to the citizens of veil and we need to just tell anybody that lives in veil or knows anybody who lives in veil on election day to please vote no thank you
Thank you Susan Kelly and after Ms. Kelly Ralph Polo Todd Okiba and Eileen Wilson
Thank you for letting me speak I'm Susan Kelly thank you Chair Grahalva I would like to talk to you today about an interim performance review as government employees and as a board member you don't get interim performance reviews you get performance reviews at every election so first let me start with thanking one of my friends for tabulating all the votes that you've made this year up to from January 1st through August 31st so that's what my performance review of you is going to be based on first I'll start with Supervisor Grahalva you voted of a total of 879 items that were voted on you voted yes 869 times that's only 10 no votes thank you however for adjusting your language about call to the audience versus call to the public I think call to the audience was being used for much of this year and it's a little demeaning so I thank you for adjusting your language there please listen to all constituents not just the left Democrat Party please listen 30% of Pima County is independent 30% is Republican and 30% approximately are Democrats so it's a wide range of backgrounds and opinions I really do like small government smaller government and fiscal responsibility I was a business leader for many many years always responsible for profit and loss I understand governments don't have profit they only have loss I would like to move on to Steve Christie Supervisor Christie I think you're doing great because we have a lot of values that align of all the votes of 879 you voted yes on 752 you are a leader in the nose of 127 Supervisor Bronson you're doing okay you had 25 no votes so that was better than your peers but also you had 854 votes that were yes I would like you to be a little more fiscally responsible you often vote fiscally with Supervisor Christie which I do recognize and appreciate but sometimes I wish you would go a little bit further and not spend our taxpayer dollars because at the end of the day we are raising property tax rates and that hurts everybody in the county whether you are Republican Democrat or Independent Matt Heinz Supervisor Heinz sorry you voted no 10 times and yay 869 times this organization is not about you it's obvious you don't care about the people of Pima County so I would appreciate it if you would continue to strive to improve your interpersonal relationships with your constituents and those of us out here and I wish Supervisor Scott was here but hopefully he will see the minutes he voted yay 875 times record breaking he only voted no four times
Thank you
Thank you
Ralph Polo
Morning, I recently reread 1984 by George Orwell and I highly recommend it to the young folks back here that are studying to be nurses and I also recommend Animal Farm you may have not gotten that in your high school or college education because it's been avoided read them read them The book the book sent a chill down my spine Orwell predicted much of what is happening today
I'm sorry Supervisor Christie are you on we have to ensure that we have a quorum
Hey the clock's still ticking
It's okay we stopped it
You stopped it after 12 seconds
I don't know about 12 but it will give you your time sir I just we can't have we we need a quorum
I can start again give me back three minutes That would be fair
Sorry
Because he missed all my good lines
We'll go ahead and do a quick recess until we have a
Oh he's back
Let's make sure
I'm back
Okay great are you having technical issues
Yeah all of a sudden just went blank probably my portrait I've never seen
Thank you Supervisor Christie okay go go ahead
You owe me
You can get 10 more seconds it's okay
So like I said Orwell writes how the thought police moved about the people to keep them in control today's corporate media and the press secretary for the president are constantly spraying false rumors about how well the economy is doing the truth is that Americans are paying much more for gasoline food and healthcare these are just three examples of the failing Bidenomics in reality the corporate media and the press secretary parrot what Orwell called newspeak and double think quote if all others accept the lie which the party imposed if all records told the same tale then the lie passed into history and became truth the entire part three of the novel is dedicated to re-education an issue that a couple of weeks ago came into this forum Orwell tells the reader that individual thinking is prohibited by government and those who have their own ideas must be reprogrammed there's so much more to discuss about the book but time is short Orwell saw the light he experienced fighting for Spain's communist republican faction and that made him realize that fighting for totalitarian form of government was not the answer I hope and pray that one day soon two are missing the three of you will come to the same conclusion a great start would be allowing the public to speak for three minutes before the two minute control limit becomes the status quo control limit becomes the status quo. I know we only have 14 people, but if we had 20, we would only be able to speak for two minutes. Remember that. I got 10 seconds. I want to thank my, talking about great teachers. Sister Maria Teresa woke me up in eighth grade, told me, "Wake up, big boy. You've got more brains than you're showing." And Brother Wise in college said, "Wake up, big boy. You've got more brains than you're showing."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Okiva. I'm going to go ahead and let you finish, and then we're going to go ahead and take our 10 o'clock.
Good morning. I stood at this very podium two weeks ago and gave you specific examples of erroneous validated signatures that made it to Pima County's petition final report for Vales incorporation. A number of others did the same. We informed you of approximately 100 specific erroneous signatures that were validated towards the final count. We advised you that there were hundreds more than the specific examples that we presented that day. Supervisor Christie and his staff received our preliminary report days prior to that meeting. You went to executive session, came back out and put on an orchestrated Q and A pretty much portraying us all liars. When it comes to our most sacred duty, voting in elections, I will not stand for that. This was a public petition for our entire community to see. If that many errors occurred on something so public, what will happen behind closed doors when we don't see the specific votes? All of us witnessed the Deputy Director of Elections, Jeremy George, sit here and read a prepared speech detailing how his department only removed 10 signature petitions for certain errors. There were countless others missed. While I'm here to call for his resignation or demand that you relieve him of his duties, he lied to you and our entire county. All you have to do is look at petition pages one and two. Look at the notary dates, 2024. All these signatures were credited towards the final count. There are many more missed. I kindly pointed this out to him as he left these chambers two weeks ago in front of Nicole Fife, Ms. Leshar's deputy. His response, "We are aware. Well, just minutes prior, he made you think otherwise. How is such gross incompetence allowed at such a high level? In the most sacred department of Pima County, the Elections Department, there is no room for error. I will be the first to tell you that I cannot stand claims of voter fraud. If you're going to make those claims, put the evidence in front of me. We did. Mr. George, the Elections Department and the Recorder's Office were the ones who committed fraud here, certifying so many errors. We were not asking you to say no, just to send the report back for review. Did they receive enough signatures? That remains unknown, but the truth will come out eventually. Now we are learning that the local Voting Center for Incorporation will be at the church of the President of Incorporate Vale, Arizona, the group pushing this. This is unacceptable." Now to our supervisor, Steve Christie. You were the supervisor that motioned to a vote. You knew of the many errors, you refused to listen to your constituents, you have rejected meetings with your constituents claiming you are remaining neutral. You are a member of the Vale Chamber of Commerce. The Vale Chamber of Commerce is funding this, so in essence, you are funding incorporation. Go to your office in the Chamber of Commerce, both, and I hear you cannot walk around without tripping over pro-incorporation signs. Your constituents, 30, 40, 50-year residents, some families who have lived here since 1800s, you rejected meetings with all of them. You sold them out and their way of life to your donors.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to take a pause at the call to the audience and move to item number 16. This is the item that's going to be heard at a time certain of 10:00 AM. Vote Centers pursuant to ARS 16-411, approval of two additional Vote Center locations for the 2024 election cycle. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes 3-0. Thank you. Oh, yeah, and we'll go to item 34. Since Ms. Hargrove is here, the Director of Elections, we can go to that one, too. 34 is a procurement item. Inclusion Solutions LLC Amendment Number One, to provide Franklin voting booths and accessories to amend the contract language. This is general fund contract amount for $361,000. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, I have a number of questions. We have 129 vote centers already. Why was it necessary to ask in this motion for an additional $361,000 additional money?
Chair Grahava and Supervisor Christie, most of this funding was related to the replacement of voting booths with some ADA compliant booths, but we do have Director Hargrove is here to, if you'd like to elaborate, ma'am.
Yes, Chair Grahava, Supervisor Christie, Administrator Leshar is correct. So this is a phase in, phasing out of the old voting booths and phasing in of new voting booths. So we did purchase some voting booths last year. The previous director had money in the budget to purchase some, so we're trying to finish out replacing all of the old voting booths so that we have enough for all 129 vote centers in addition to early voting.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor, Supervisor Christie, did you have more questions? And then Supervisor Bronson.
I do think, is this additional money, is any of it required to provide the Recorder's Office to return, excuse me, to run her early voting centers? And is this part of her operation?
Chair Grahava, Supervisor Christie, the Elections Department supplies all of the voting booths and accessible equipment to the Recorder's Office for early voting, so we do supply them their equipment they need.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Hargrove, so this money is being, some of it at least, being dedicated to the Recorder's Office?
Supervisor Christie, very little, but yes, there is some going to, goes to Recorder's Office.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Hargrove, would you have any idea, is this money going to be paying for the individual who was monitoring, I believe he was a consultant, at one point? Is any of this money being dedicated to that, or if not?
Supervisor Christie, this is a totally different company. I do not believe the Recorder's Office has had any purchases from this vendor. This has been all elections.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that this item be continued to the next meeting, or at least when the EIC can have an opportunity to review this and then bring it back before the board to hear the EIC's response to that.
So this is a substitute motion?
A substitute motion.
We had a motion and a second.
Was it EIC, just clarification?
Was that EIC, the Elections Integrity Commission? Okay, I believe so.
I'm sorry, I got, there's another item that I was referring to regarding the consultant, so I'll bring that up then, but I would like to move that this be sent to the EIC for their review and then brought back before the board.
Okay, so that's a substitute motion that fails for a second. Supervisor Bronson, you had a comment?
I needed a point of clarification.
Okay.
For Ms. Hargrove, the equipment we're purchasing, the booths, it's basically to bring us into compliance, is it not? The ADA, or is this, are we purchasing, why are we purchasing new equipment? The old is out of, it's at the end of its useful life?
Yes, Supervisor Bronson, so yes, the old voting booths are over 30 years old, and the vendor that made them is no longer in business, so we can no longer get parts to repair them. So we are phasing them out and purchasing new voting booths to replace them. And yes, these voting booths are ADA compliant, and they can also hold the accessible equipment that we use in the vote centers.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Supervisor Bronson.
I would have seconded. I don't see the point in continuing this. We are getting close to the 24 election, and while I appreciate Supervisor Christie's concerns, I think that we are at the end of the useful life for this equipment, and the outcome isn't going to change.
Okay, thank you. And I agree, I'm glad to support this request by Director Hargrove and the Elections Department. I think these new voting booths, aside from replacing ones that are no longer, they're old and unusable technology and equipment, the new ones will be more comfortable, secure, and accessible for users, and that will ensure that our election staff have one less issue to think about on the day of elections. And so we had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
Abstained.
Item passes 3-0 with one abstention.
Supervisor, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay.
Three and one abstention. Okay. Go back to call to the audience. All righty. Okay. Eileen Wilson, followed by Elizabeth Moll and Cory Geis.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Eileen Wilson, a Pima County resident, District Four. Thank you, Supervisor Christie. February 10th, 2023, the Arizona Senate Nominations Committee rejected Dr. Teresa Cullen. She was the Governor Hobbs nomination for State Health Department Director. Immediately following the rejection, Dr. Cullen tried to remove her name from the nomination for the state position. Too late, she was already rejected. Pima County countered by Jan Leshar, Administrator, indicating Cullen never officially resigned from Pima County. Teresa Cullen returned to her Pima County Health Director position. Why do we care here in September of 2023? Because we don't trust the direction of Teresa Cullen for our health decisions. She misled us, and so did the Board of Supervisors during this pandemic. Currently, on the public Pima County website, masks continue to be promoted for health employees and for the public. If you are wearing a cloth mask, Cullen recommends two layers. CDC has not issued any new masking mandate. Not that we trust CDC, but Pima County often uses CDC as their scientific background for health decisions. Masking vaccines and health decisions should never be mandated. Health decisions are the decisions of each individual and their health provider, not a mandate for a bureaucrat or an elected official. Look back at all the missteps by our Pima County Health Department concerning masks, closures, vaccines, and inciting fear. While all the directions to provide health protection offer promoting fear and control, our community continues to recover economically and emotionally from county misdirection, and we won't be so easily manipulated in our future. Thank you.
Elizabeth Moll. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. If you recall, Rex Scott asked that I write the proclamation for Constitution Day, and I did and turned it in, and I'm so glad that Kami rewrote it because it's much better than what I turned in. But there's two things that were missing from it that I would just like to review with you. Whereas it is important to know what is in the Constitution as opposed to what is attributed to the Constitution. The phrase "separation of church and state" is not in the Bill of Rights, nor is it in the Constitution. It is simply that, a phrase. It is not a statute, it is not a law, and it is not an amendment to the Constitution. It is one of the most misused phrases in our vernacular. It is simply a phrase listed from a letter by Thomas Jefferson written to Danesberry Baptist Association Church on January 1st, 1802, to reassure them that the government would not infringe on the religious liberties. Actually, Thomas Jefferson was in Europe when the Constitution was planned and never saw it until after it had been established. Nor was Thomas Jefferson one of the congressmen who passed the Bill of Rights. The second one is, the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. Every elected and public official in America takes an oath to uphold it. The equal branches of the United States Government, Congress, the President, and the Supreme Court are all subservient to the Constitution. The Constitution has been called the greatest governing document ever written. As Benjamin Franklin left the Constitution Convention, he was reportedly asked what kind of government the founders would propose, and he replied, "A republic, a republic, if you can keep it." There is one very misused word in our society today, and it is not found in the Constitution. It is democracy. The founding fathers knew better. Thank you.
Point Guide, followed by Angie Anderson, Cory Stevens, and Sharon Fickers.
Good morning, Board. I'm Cory Geis. Sure, can you hear me now? In the spring of this year, I sent each of you charts of Arizona all-cause excess mortality. During the COVID pandemic, deaths surmounted 40,000. Two-thirds of these occurred after the experimental vaccines rolled out. Data was officially sourced from ADHS and shared trends with databases from around the world, sort of. I later followed up with emails that had charts demonstrating that Arizona performed worse than every other state in the Union as far as cumulative all-cause excess deaths, far worse than even Governor Cuomo's New York. Arizona came in at a whopping 9.2% cumulative excess deaths, when the average US number was 5.2%, a number that even Anthony Fauci admitted was embarrassing. Arizona's 9.2% was nearly double the US average. In fact, I sent charts showing that Arizona's kill rate was higher than every other developed nation in the world. To find as poor a performance, one has to go to the Third World, countries where UN-controlled dictators coerced vaccines and suppressed effective early treatment protocols. Pima County Board members are among the governing elite in this state, responsible for one of the most murderous responses to the COVID scam. This is so because you reject all outside voices from your ideological circle. You are anything but diverse, or tolerant, or open-minded, or independent, and you're certainly not scientific. The data's been there, plenty of it's been there for a number of years now. I petitioned a root cause investigation of these deaths from each of you because the CDC had added the COVID shot to the childhood schedule, and our children are now being forced, coerced by pediatricians to take this shot, a shot that's unnecessary for the health and indeed detrimental to it. Even pediatrician Paul Offit recommended against this shot for youth, and he hasn't recommended against any vaccine in his whole life, I don't think. By this date, there is a preponderance of medical and scientific literature expounding the deadly and damaging effects of these COVID shots, yet I have not heard back from even one board member that these, that they have conducted a root cause investigation and either exonerated the vaccines or halted further promotion. Indeed, your website continues to push the vaccines. At some point, we have to wake up and realize that this was an experiment, and it turned deadly.
Thank you. Angie Anderson.
Chair Grahava. My name is Angie Anderson. I'm a Pima County resident, District Four. Thank you, Steve Christie. I want to say that I miss the invocation at these meetings. Public prayer helps us to set aside our differences and establishes the tone of a God-centered meeting. I also want to congratulate the Latin American Social Club and Fred Martinez. I was at the El Casino Ballroom in 2000 for their reopening for the Buckwheat Zidico Show, so it's a beautiful venue. I enjoy it. My legendary teacher is my mother. And I want to read something about my mother. And I want to read something about polio that I did not know, and I wish my mother was here to hear this. The polio vaccine was actually kind of a ruse, because polio was caused by industrial problems. And the government and the American Medical Association got together, and after the vaccine was administered, the Jonas Salk vaccine, then polio was renamed. A lot of things that are going on today happened then. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Stevens.
Let's discuss a fundamental cornerstone of our constitutional republic. Freedom of speech, enshrined in the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. It is a topic that holds immense significance, not only in America but also across the globe. I firmly believe that this cherished right should not be limited, and I will share with you why. The First Amendment of the Constitution states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." These words are not just ink on parchment, they are the embodiment of our nation's commitment to free expression. Freedom of speech is the lifeblood of a thriving republic. It empowers citizens to voice their opinions, question authority, and engage in robust debates. This diversity of thought and expression strengthens our society by fostering innovation, progress, and accountability. It is through the free exchange of ideas that we challenge the status quo, learn from one another, and push the boundaries of knowledge. Moreover, freedom of speech is not just about popular or agreeable ideas. It is equally, if not important, viable, vital for protecting unpopular, dissenting, or even controversial viewpoints. It is easy to defend speech that we agree with, but the true test of a free society is our willingness to protect speech that challenges our beliefs. By doing so, we ensure that we do not descend into a state where a single authority dictates what we can and cannot be said. I ask you, do you want to be a dictator or facilitator of this Board, Adalita? Because it seems that you like to dictate what others can and cannot do or say, as would be evident how you treated Steve Christie last meeting. He has the right to say, and do, and freely speak. And I think that you should seriously consider how you want to proceed in further meetings. Thank you.
Sharon Fickus, followed by Tara Ratliff, Tim Lox, and Sarah Price.
I'm Sharon Fickus, a legal resident Pima County. And I wonder many weeks, why am I even here? Why do I bother to participate in Call to the Public? My comments don't seem to matter to this squad of four. That's what I call you Bronson, Hines, Scott, and Grahava. Grahava warns us about her rules of civility, decorum, and unlawful interference, but these rules don't seem to apply to others, like when Supervisor Hines decides to get up and walk out on Call to the Public. And he didn't disappoint me today. He pulled that stunt. And I also want to think about when Call to the Public, well, Adalita Grahava, she ignores us. She talks to her clerk, she talks to Rex Scott when he's here, she flips her hair, plays with her papers, and that's just unacceptable. And what about following a motion and a second when recently she behaved like a scorned little girl, following the personal point of privilege that was directed at her tyrannical behavior? I am here and I will keep speaking up and encouraging others, because our voices matter. You like it or not, you don't have to listen, but we will keep speaking up. Our lives would not be threatened right now to the extent that they are, but that is because of this elected Board of Supervisors. If you cared about our borders, if you cared about our taxpayers in Pima County, we wouldn't be facing quite so much. Each individual in this audience is a beacon of light and provides hope to others. This time in our lives could be fatal if we fail to recognize it's our rights for free speech. We are at a tipping point in our country, our county, and our state. We can call and will make a difference. We have the power, the imagination, to create and work for a better community. It does not matter how long we live here, but it matters how we use our time. We're standing over this target, and we see these monsters at work. 2024 election is not far away, and we are the change. We're working together. May God bless Pima County.
Tara Ratliff.
Good morning. My name is Tara Ratliff. Please vote no on Agenda Item 37. Pause the building of the American Battery Factory, Inc. facility and consider the far-reaching effects of promoting electrical vehicles, EVs, and what this facility will mean to our county. Do you recall the representative stating to you that every day their factory would be using six pool-sized amounts of water for production? Our state is being faced with the possibility of water shortages. How can you proceed with this reckless use of this precious resource? Have you considered the EVs are not sustainably or economically viable? They're a fire hazard, dealers are turning them away, and more EV owners are turning in their vehicles. The fad of owning an EV seems to be fading. How long before this battery company will have to lay off workers and/or close their business? How will your constituents be able to afford the purchase of an EV and the electricity to charge them? And considering that TEP has already asked them and given a rate hike, how many more will be coming? Can TEP's grid even handle the extra load to the system with more EVs being charged? California has already asked its residents to only charge them at night. This battery factory is not a viable, sustainable, or economical business model. Next, please end the Worldview lease and operating agreement. What will all the data collection and data be used for? Will it be used to access every individual's and business's carbon footprint? And will a limit for carbon usage be forced on your constituents and businesses? Will overuse of carbon be linked to penalties, or will we be blocked from buying certain items? Worldview has not lived up to its anticipated expectations regarding job creation and annual payroll for our county. And I recall that you extended Worldview's lease even though they were in arrears. They continue to refuse to disclose financial information, but have stated to you that they lose money on a yearly basis. There are also problems with their remote sensing. Have you considered the privacy violations this kind of data collection involves? It's time to get rid of Worldview. Finally, I will remind you of the laws put in place to protect we the people. ARS 447951 protects businesses in Arizona from being required to enforce a mask mandate established by any governmental entity within Arizona. ARS 36681 privates the public from forced masking at any government building or premises. ARS 36685, government entities in Arizona may not require a resident of the state to receive a vaccination for COVID-19 or any variant. And while I like the idea of Constitution Day, I think it was laughable that it was being presented by this Board. Thank you.
Tim Lox. Tim Lox, and then Sarah Price.
Good morning Board. My name is Tim Lox. I think it's become quite clear that the Democrats on this Board don't really care to listen to anyone. The vote always goes how Adalita wants it to go. It's sad, Adalita. You put your hand over your heart, you pledge allegiance to the flag. Under God, I question your relationship with God. You know, progressivism, communism, and socialism all serve Satanism. There's no other way around that. You violate your oaths, abuse the Constitution, and abuse our vote. I'm your CEO, and once again, I will remind you that you work for us. With regard to the vaccines, the vax mandates, no one has ever talked about the Nuremberg Code. You don't need to go beyond the first paragraph of the Nuremberg Code to realize that it was really not a good idea. And the United States did adopt the Nuremberg Code. Okay, now, we're talking about money here. The Elections Department and the County Recorder have already received, as I believe, two additional approvals for expenditures. We had a big discussion about new voting equipment, and now the Recorder wants, or the Elections Department wants more. And we're talking about $950,000 to fix voter rolls? They're just a mess. I'm here to tell you, last July, last month, the County Recorder and her then-chief deputy spent a good hour and a half talking about fixing the voter rolls and what the process is. What do they need more money for? She didn't ask for more money at the EIC. They have a process for fixing the voter rolls. You do not have to give this $950,000 to the County Recorder. You can send it back to Phoenix. And Thanos was here last month. You guys raked him over the coals because of not including things in the budget. Apparently, you don't care about the illegal immigrants, the drug trafficking, the human trafficking, children being sold into sex slavery, or sacrificed on satanic altars. You don't care about that. But, you know, you rake him over the coals, but you're happy to give everyone else money. The manner in which you administer your positions is absolutely disgraceful. So I'm going to tell you once again to cut the crap. We don't need this, we're tired of it, it's got to change. Thank you.
Sarah Price, followed by Dave Smith, and then our last speaker is Ellen Thompson.
Good morning to the Board and Chairman Grahava. My first time speaking here at the Board, and the last meeting I came to did it. It made me angry. I'm angry because of the way you've cut time to the public, Call to the Public, and then to see you do what you did to Chairman Bronson and Steve Christie when they had a comment. Their personal privilege has been cut, and I don't know what more you guys can do. I just don't like it. I'm angry, and I'll do whatever I can. I should have said, I'm Sarah Price, and I live in District Two, and Hines, I'm working my tail off trying to get signatures and get you out of there. You better look for a better place. Anyway, the other comment I had, well, I love the Constitution, I appreciate that, I appreciate Rex Scott stepping forward and doing that. We need to educate our children with the Constitution. The last thing I have to say is climate change. The big deal now is Hobbs is saying we have a climate crisis. And we are sitting on our front page of our website, "Climate Crisis: Intense Heat." Everyone knows that lives in Arizona, it gets hot in the summer, and it gets colder in the winter. And when it gets colder, we have these snowbirds that come in, but they always are smart enough, this has been for years, to go away in the summer. So, this is ridiculous, to spend more money on a grant that you're getting for climate change. That's more government at the level way above us, way above you, way above the state, way above us, government control. And it threw me off. Anyway, we don't need that kind of government control. There's nothing wrong with our climate, it's doing what it's been doing forever. And let me see if I have something else to say. Yes, with your grant writers, people that are writing for grants to get money for our county, have them look into things that would be a grant to help with this illegal immigration and our borders and our sex trafficking. Anyway, thank you for letting me participate.
Thank you. Dave Smith.
We had a couple good proclamations today. I'm glad to see that Chairman, the Board, I appreciate you appreciating the Constitution and having that day, because it's a very important thing. You know, I watch these citizens come up and do this. It's very anxiety-filled, you know, to come up and stand in front of people and present ideas. Some of them are confrontational, some of them are advisory, some of them are just simply saying what they want to think, which is a key element of our society. One of my, you talk about teachers that are so important, I was thinking back, listening to that. A guy named Jack Wallace was my political science teacher in high school, and he forced me, he was a liberal, and I was a Goldwater Republican, so he forced me to defend every single idea I had. And that was very powerful. I mean, it really, it ended up being my major in college because I was so excited by the idea. Now, this Constitution came from a rebellion. You know, we were a Confederacy that wasn't working. And what were we doing? We weren't taking care of the veterans. Shea's rebellion was actually a bunch of veterans that hadn't been given any of their benefits by the government. I drive through the homeless here, how many of them are veterans we're not taking care of? And this Constitution, when they formed it, they made that mission statement, right? We the people, the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, because they didn't have a good union, establish justice, because they were ripping each other off. The states were even denying loans to each other. Foreign investment was dead. You know, and this thing ensured domestic tranquility. Boy, those veterans scared the hell out of those people, and they decided they needed to form a country, a nation, a constitutional republic. And again, this is our common defense, we're not even securing our border. We spend more time concerned about illegal aliens than our own citizens. And frankly, when you say promote the general welfare, this is in our mission statement. Driving around this county, our welfare is deteriorating. It's not about a paycheck. Welfare is a quality of life. And I challenge you to reestablish your, that's very distracting, by the way, to somebody. But, you know, I challenge you to think about this in this month where we are going to celebrate this Constitution, to understand that general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty, blessings of liberty require a safety, security, trust. I ask you, I challenge you as a Board, let's work toward building trust back with our citizens. Give us back our county as the citizens of this country. And consider that your mission statement. I hope you reflect on that, because you said you honor the Constitution, so reflect on it, think about it. And thank you for passing that proclamation.
Liz Thompson. And Ms. Thompson is our last speaker, so if you'd like to put in a card, please do so. Thanks.
Okay, it's Elizabeth. Thank you. I didn't have anything prepared, but I just came and listened to everybody else, and I appreciate so much the people who spoke today and what they had to say. I appreciate the statistics that were brought forward. I didn't realize a 30% of our county is independent, 30% Republican, and 30% Democrat. I had no idea. I mean, I knew that it was sort of like that, but I wasn't sure. And then, I would like to say that because there are 30% of each group, that you should be listening to all of us, not just one or two. And this morning, I heard on the news that we spend $7 million a month as citizens of Pima County to support shelters for the illegals. And I wonder how many people are trying to pay their mortgage payments right now, and trying to pay their rent. And yet, the county is paying, putting an additional $7 million a month, plus the $500 that we use for transportation of illegals, on top of that, every month. And I don't think the citizens in this county are aware of how much of their tax dollars is being spent. And I realize that some of it's coming from the federal government, and some of it's coming from other places. But in the end, the bottom line is, it's all our tax dollars that are supporting these people. And I, for one, am really opposed to it. I also wanted to comment on the Constitution, and I think that's great that you are honoring the Constitution. I have a problem with it being a living document, because to me, that's like a red warning flag. And to me, the Constitution is like the Bible. You don't change a dot, you don't change a tittle of it. It's what it is. And it is distracting, I agree, Dave. And also, I wanted to comment that, yes, the Elections Department, somebody said, has no room for error. I agree with that. I have vetted the election registration voter rolls in this state, in this county, and they are an absolute disaster. And I wouldn't want to put my name on the bottom of that saying that I was part of the Election Department. I also worked the polls, and I have seen equipment that wasn't in the boxes when it was supposed to be delivered to the voting centers, and I don't think that's right either. was supposed to be delivered to the voting centers, and I don't think that's right either. I think there should be some accountability in the Election Department. I also want to say that I heard this morning that the vaccine, because that was brought up, the vaccine was approved after 23 subjects used it. 23 people had the vaccine before it was approved. Think about that.
Okay. With no other speaker cards, we're going to go ahead and close the call to the public and ask if any board members wish to respond to a criticism, ask the staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Okay? Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to go, we're going to skip executive session, because that's at 12:00 PM. Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. Item number 10, Flood Control District. This is a contract with the city of Tucson to provide an IGA for design, construction, maintenance, management improvements for Avra Valley. It's a no-cost extension. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion is second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. Item 11 is New Hope UMC of Tucson. This is an exchange agreement. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously 4-0. Library District Board, item 12, Grand Acceptance for the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records to provide state grants and aid. I'll go ahead and move, and this is a match. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion is second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now, we're on, yeah, just a moment, please. We still have a, we still have a quorum, but we've lost Supervisor Christie. I want her to be able to vote on it. There he is. Okay. We're good. There was just a switch of screens. We didn't lose you. Well, we're still switching screens. Can we? I'm sorry? Okay. Can we put up Supervisor? There we are. There we are. Thank you. They're looking, they're putting up slides for different items, and we lost you there for a second, Supervisor Christie. Now, we're on item, sitting as the Board of Supervisors. Item 13, Approval of the Consent Calendar.
Move approval. If nobody wishes to.
Pull any items?
Second.
And have a second, a motion by Supervisor Bronson, a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion? Hmm. There we are. Any discussion? Any items pulled? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously 4-0. Now, County Administrator, this is, item number 14, is Tucson, Pima County Historical Commission. Staff is recommending that the city and county retain the joint Tucson and Pima County Historical Commission. Administrator Lesher, did you want to add anything to this item?
Chair Gidi Hala, again, when this came before the board a while back, we had received information from the state that we needed to split the Tucson-Pima Historical Commission, which has been together for a long time. Subsequently, we have been instructed that it does not need to be divided, and so we are requesting that we be allowed to maintain the joint commission.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? Supervisor Heinz, and then Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Heinz, go ahead, then Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. And I think probably some of this.
Is that better?
Yeah. Okay. I believe that this can probably be accomplished with just kind of direction to staff, most likely, but, and I'm a little confused how it needed to be separated. We passed it to separate it, and then the state sort of decided now it doesn't. That's really bizarre to me, but side issue. One of the things that I think maybe could have contributed to this is, like, it's the city and the county, there are different rules, and one thing we don't have is term limit parity. We have some folks on our side of the commission that have been there for literally decades, and I think it's important to allow for others in the community to participate, and I know that there are others that want to participate. So something that, as we go forward and retain the joint commission, it's important, I believe, that staff work to ensure term and term limit parity with the city of Tucson, so that our membership doesn't have kind of a different set of rules in terms of how long they can serve and all that kind of stuff. Then, the second item is that for, on the county side of things that we can kind of control, anyone who's been there for 10 or more years must be immediately considered termed out for at least a year or more, just to kind of reset things and to give others an opportunity to actually serve. And lastly, something that I think that we should have been doing for a while now is, the commission doesn't have any, like, dollars, right? It doesn't, it can't actually do too much, so if we would consider giving it, like, $200,000 annually, not a huge amount compared to our budget, just so that they could issue subgrants, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 subgrants for very specific reviewed historic preservation projects, this could be like very helpful for smaller communities like Aho, Vail, South Tucson, you know, throughout the county, and these are resources that could have a significant impact and that these communities may not be able to access in other ways. So I would like to see staff focus on all of those things, and I am in support of the item.
Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Bronson.
I think Supervisor Heinz had some good points there, and I would just like to ask the county administrator, Madam Chair, what's the timetable looking like here as far as, it says, county ordinances and articles of operation? When is it projected that all of that will be completed and the commission will be up to full speed and working?
Chair Gidi Hala, and Supervisor Christie, I will turn for a moment to Deputy County Administrator DeBonis, but the commission has been working. It has, it was not divided historically, and it has continued to operate. These would simply be amendments to that. Anything else, Mr. DeBonis?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, Ms. Lesher, you're correct. The commission has continued to meet, so the mayor and council are scheduled to take action tomorrow on this very same item. So, subject to your approval and the council's approval, staff will begin working with each jurisdiction as well as the commission on the proposed modifications and look to bring those back as timely as possible. I think we can give an update to the board within 60 days and then lay out a more definitive timeline, once we know the specific tasks that we need to complete and include the commission in the framing up of those items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson?
Yeah, to Mr. DeBonis's, I think this should go to the commission first, and any changes, and then the recommendations after the commission has recommended come to the board. So I think it's a two-step process there.
Supervisor Bronson, are you suggesting that we go ahead and move forward with this and bring back the suggested changes?
And then they can, under direction, bring back any changes, but first through the commission and then to the board.
Yeah, I do have some concern about a wholesale, like, term limit kind of imposition. I do think it's beneficial to a commission to have expertise, both that have, you know, have been there a little while.
Have institutional memory.
Yes, absolutely. I think it's important. So, but I do, I do like the idea of it going to the historical commission, and then they can suggest any tweaks, and I'll be happy to support those. Okay? All right. So I believe we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now, we're on item 15, Arizona Aerospace Foundation 390th Bomber Memorial Museum Roof Upgrades.
Move the item.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Bronson, a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. We've addressed 16. We're on 17, Monthly Financial Update. This is a discussion, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much. Chair Gidi Hala and members of the board, while we have been providing a monthly update in a written format, the request was to bring this to the board for a more open discussion each month. And we do have a presentation to walk through. We do have our finance director, Ms. Moulton, is here. Excuse me, and I will turn it over to her, please.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Grahava Supervisors. We do have a slide deck. What we're doing today is to give you a brief overview of where we stand at the end of fiscal year 2223. That year ended June 30th. We are in the process of closing our books for the year. That normally takes several months in conjunction with the various auditors that we have, working with our FCNR, our Department of Financial Control and Reporting within the Finance Department, as well as with Grants Management and Innovation on the grant side of the audit. First, what we would like to do, next slide, please, is to talk just a little bit about the board policies that we implemented and/or created in this past fiscal year. The first one is the General Fund Capital Improvement Pay-as-you-go program. While that is not a new program, it is foundational to our budget and how we manage our fiscal business within the county. The second one is the General Fund Impact of State Legislative Cost Shifts. While that has been a policy of the board in fiscal year 2324 budget, it was the first time it was actually implemented. Again, it is a foundational policy for the Pima County. And then the final one is the General Fund Fund Balance. That is a new policy that you implemented this past year in conjunction with the budget, and again, foundational for providing more transparency to the public and to the board on our fiscal status. Next slide, please. What you see in front of you today is a comparison of the adopted budget to the period 14 actuals. As I indicated, we are not finished closing the books for fiscal year 23, so these are preliminary numbers. The number that I would like to draw your attention to is the last one on the slide. We have 100, we had an ending fund balance projected of $163.8 million, of which 93 million is the new board policy for fund balance for the general fund. Then, we included $66 million in next year, or this year, 2324 budget, to be spent on items that the board identified, leaving us with an available unrestricted general fund balance after adjustments of approximately $4.4 million. Next slide, please.
Can I, Madam Chair, just a quick question?
Supervisor Bronson.
To that ending fund balance, what does that do to our general obligation bonds? What's a healthy unrestricted fund balance?
The 93 million that we have set aside as part of the general fund reserve is where you would look for that healthy fund balance. The 17% of our expenditures is what the board policy has set, and we believe that that is a sufficient amount to be set aside.
I don't.
Thank you.
The next several slides are just a high-level review of where we stand as we look back on fiscal year 2223. On the positive revenue side, we received $27.6 million more in state shared sales tax than was originally budgeted. Hotel motel tax also came in at higher, at $8.3 million. Part of that was due to increased travel to Tucson, but part of that is also related to audits being done by ADOR at the request of Pima County. We also received opioid settlement money of $6.8 million. The Health Department is the recipient and the department that will be requesting how that money is spent. The Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department also came in, slightly under $3 million over what was budgeted. A good portion of that is related to the sale of biogas. And finally, Pima Animal Care donations came in well above what was budgeted due to the generosity of the people in Pima County at $2.5 million. Next slide, please. Now, we move over to budget overruns. All of these have been brought to your attention at one point or another during the past fiscal year, but it's important to highlight them as we close out that year and move into the current year. Transportation was over budget by $10.4 million. This related to a slew of projects that were approved but did not get completed until last fiscal year. The Superior Court was $2.9 million over budget. That was in part due to the transfer of maintaining the clerk of the court's IT infrastructure. Part of it was, a million was, a million dollars of budget was transferred from the clerk of the court to the Superior Court, but also there was a remediation plan that needed to happen, and that amounts to the remaining dollars. Health Benefit Trust came in over budget, $2.8 million in claims and higher cost claimants. We had medical inflation is running higher than regular inflation.
How much higher?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Bronson?
How much higher?
Supervisor, Chair Grahava, Supervisor Bronson, the number I have is it's running 9% to 12% higher. Normally, or regular inflation, or the CPI is running quite a bit less than that. The Sheriff Department came in over budget at $2.2 million. We've talked about that in several meetings. Debt Service Fund came in $2.1 million over budget. That came in over budget for two reasons. One, we did our debt sales several months earlier than had been anticipated in fiscal year 23, and in addition to that, the interest rates rose dramatically. And then finally, the Public Defense Services also came in over budget, seven, just slightly over $700,000. Next slide. We have talked repeatedly about contingency at the board meetings. We are presenting here today how we used some of those contingency funds. The Sheriff Department, we used 2.2 in general fund contingency. The Superior Court, 1.7. That's in relation to the remediation efforts on the IT infrastructure. Public Defender Services, $7.715,000, and the Communications Office at just slightly over $100,000.
Madam Chair, just a quick.
Supervisor Bronson, and then I'll let her go ahead and finish the presentation.
Can we get line items on all the use of the contingency funds?
Detailed line item?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Moulton?
Thanks.
Next slide, please. We have also talked a great deal over the last year on vacancies and the use of vacancy savings. What this represents is departments have had a number of vacancies. We know this. We have talked about how much money that is in the county as a whole. Each department is given an entire budget. Some of it is in labor and some of it is in supplies and services. What you're seeing here is the departments that use their vacancy savings for supplies and services, because they either did not have sufficient staff and they had to hire staff, or because they had other needs that they needed to fund. So, Public Defense Services moved 2.4 million in vacancy savings to supplies and services. The Regional Wastewater Reclamation moved $2 million. Facilities Management moved $1 million. The Health Department, 1.4. The County Free Library, $800,000. The Recorder, $760,000. And Pima County Attorney, $550,000. That represents the highlights of where we stand so far as we close out fiscal year 2223. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
I could go on and on and dig in, but I promise... I could go on and on and dig in, but I promise I won't. Just, again, if we can get more detail on much of what you presented was, thank you, but a little more detail would help me. And then, when are you closing out? I forget the, I used to know these things, but when?
We're, Chair Gruhavas, Supervisor Bronson, we are in the process of closing the fiscal year. We normally get the books completely closed and audited shortly after Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas. It takes quite a bit of time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Can we put Supervisor Christie back up on the screen? Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. And did you need any action on this? It's just an update. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 18. This is the Pima County Recorder Voter Registration Roles Fund from House Bill 2862 General Appropriations. I'll go ahead and move the item. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Heinz, seconds. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I apologize. I got a couple of these items confused or didn't highlight the one I wanted to, but this particular one, we got some background material here that states, in a PowerPoint kind of format, that the Pima County Recorder will receive $950,000 in funding for the next four quarters, and that the Recorder's Office plans to use the funds from the state to continue to strengthen the foundation of the voter registration rolls. And this is where my question leads, is this enabling the database to be maintained in-house rather than the outside consultant retained last year?
Administrator Lesher, and then I apologize, we also have a presentation. And so if you wanted to answer the question, or do you want to go ahead and go through the presentation? Ms. Moulton?
Chair Gruhavas, I think this is, this is accepting state funding. There was a House bill that allowed for additional dollars. I think we've heard today comments related to the need to maintain or the maintenance of the voter rolls. So this is allowing us to accept those dollars that have been provided to the state from House Bill 2862. The very specifics of, I think we can, Ms. Moulton has some additional information, but we can also, after agreeing to accept the dollars, provide additional information if it's desired in the line items, perhaps as Supervisor Bronson has requested.
Yeah, and I think Supervisor Christie is asking specifically about the contract that was for the individual that used to work at the Recorder's Office and then was working offsite. Am I correct, Supervisor Christie?
Yeah, and basically, if I could get an answer, I'm taking it that there's no one from the Recorder's Office present?
No, there's not. And Supervisor Gruhavas?
If I could get direct information on the outside consultant and how this money is going to affect him, and if it is directed towards a database operation that's going to be maintained in-house, what's going to happen to his employment contract and his status as a contractual employee? So if I could get some direct information on that particular position and its dispensation as a result of this money being dispersed, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Bronson, do you have a question?
Just, yeah, point of clarification. The money that we are getting from the state, is it specifically for voter registration rolls, or are there other allowed uses?
Administrator Lesher, Ms. Moulton? I did, I believe, and Ms. Moulton can correct me if I'm wrong, this can pay for temporary staff to assist with the large volume of data entry, mailings, continued outreach, can pay for that. There's, is that correct, Ms. Moulton?
Yes, and if I may, Chair Gruhavas, there is, it's a little confusing because the bill provided for two buckets of information, I mean, two buckets of funding, if you will. What we are asking for is the approval to accept the funding related to the maintenance of the voter rolls. There is, there was another million dollars for testing of secure ballots and things like that. We are not addressing that at this time. We are simply looking for the one minute.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
Would it be, I think, based on the fact that we haven't gathered enough information on this, that we could also continue this item until that information is provided to the Board and we have a more finite explanation of how this money is going to be dispersed, that would, I think, solve a lot of the issues and give people enough time to prevent any kind of discrepancies here. So I would like to make a motion that this item be continued at least till the next Board meeting to compile the information as to how this money is going to be spent.
And that's in the form of a substitute motion, Madam Chair?
Correct.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second for a substitute motion to continue this item. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie? That's a yes.
I think that's a yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Gruhavas? No. Item fails. So we're back to the original motion.
Actually, Supervisor, I'm sorry, Chair Gruhavas, it's 2-2, so it automatically will go on to the next meeting.
On to the next item. Okay.
So we got our way.
Right, but I, the frustration for me is that this is to also hire more people, and we can give direction once we accept the funding, but that was kind of why I wanted to go ahead and move forward. Okay. Well, moot point at this point.
Madam Chair, though, can we get the information that Supervisor Christie requested, since we are continuing this to our next meeting?
I assume so. I hope that it wasn't part of the presentation that we didn't, okay, great. I'm getting a no, so that makes me feel better about that. Okay. All right, so item 18 will be continued, and now we're going to go to the time-certain item. This is agenda item number 31. It's the contract, oh, let's see, the Tonautum Nation to provide intergovernmental agreement for coordination of prompt processing, execution, and enforcement of state tribal warrants, demands for extradition, and protection orders, and to authorize the appointment of the tribal prosecutor as a special deputy county attorney. This is a no-cost five-year term.
I'll move the item, but don't we have?
Yeah, and I'll second. Supervisor Bronson moved and I'll second. We actually do have our county attorney here and also...
I think we have some...
Our newly elected chair, Verlin Jose. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you.
Madam Chair, could I have a point of quick inquiry?
On this item?
Madam Chair?
On this item, Supervisor Christie?
Point of inquiry, could you tell me what the final dispensation of the last vote was?
It's coming back at our next meeting.
It was asked to continue.
It's coming, it's continuing to our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello. Congratulations. Here's your list. Okay, and welcome, Administrator or County Attorney, come on over, please.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Madam Chair.
Talk better now.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, County Administrator Lesher, Clerk Manriquez, Civil Chief Deputy, Mr. Brown. Thank you so much for having us here. Very briefly, I do want to make introductions to our brand-new Chairman of the Tonautum Nation, Verlin Jose, Vice Chairwoman Carla Johnson, Attorney General Howard Schenker. We're also joined this morning from the Tonautum Nation, we have our Acting Chief Prosecutor Caroline Allen, we have Deputy Attorney General Wei Lei, we have Assistant Attorney General Marissa Seitz. And from my office, the document that you have before you, Civil Deputies Kyle Johnson and Bobby Yu, who helped author the contract. We're back before you again. You may recall that we were here before you with what was considered a first in the nation, an intergovernmental agreement with the Pasquio Yaki tribe to specially deputize Pima County prosecutors, to specially deputize prosecutors from the Pasquio Yaki tribe to act in our courts and to help, help us better serve tribal members and to do, to do better and more equitably in those prosecutions. We're back before you again here today after a process where the nation, the Tonautum Nation, led us in an intergovernmental agreement with their nation. We went to their legislative council and were pleased with a unanimous vote in support of the IGA, and we thank them for the trust. And we're here before you to ask that you approve an IGA with the Tonautum Nation, which will complete us, we hope, in serving all of Pima County. Chairman.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. This is a very special day. The work that we all do, that you all do, that we all do, and everyone else that stands with us is very important, not only for our children, but for our elders and everyone in between. Madam Chairwoman of the Board, thank you for your time. Honorable Board Members, thank you for your time. As was said, my name is Verlin Jose, Chairman of the Tonautum Nation. We have the Vice Chairwoman Carla Johnson of the Tonautum Nation, Attorney General Schenker, and other members from the nation. Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the Board. I know you're very busy, so I'll be brief. I only have 20 pages of talking point. As you know, you may know, if I've met some of you before and some of you I have not, I look forward to working with you. We believe in communication. We believe in working together because together we are stronger. The nation, the nation has over 36,000 members occupying tribal lands, all the way from Hermosillo, Sonora, to Phoenix, Arizona. Half of the state of Sonora, half of the state of Arizona, is our Aboriginal lands. We've been here since Time of Memorial. We are actually now the size of 2.8 million acres small, somewhere like the size of the state of Connecticut. That's what we're putting right now. As many of you know, that the majority, or if not all, of Pima County is in the Aboriginal lands of the Tonautum. The Tonautum Nation now, majority of it is in Pima County. So we are family. We are partners, and we need to continue to work together. The agreement that Attorney General spoke about is an important step moving forward, recognizing each other's, recognizing each other's and our ability to work together for the benefit of other people. These things have been a long time coming, and I believe that these practices are best practices moving forward that could be examples, models for many other jurisdictions to follow. It's about working together, working together, recognizing each other's responsibilities for the people who we represent in these positions. Now, I just want to say that, in conclusion, this is a win-win situation. The Tribal Council, as was stated, passed this resolution supporting this unanimously, no questions asked, because they believe that it is a win-win situation. And so therefore, I stand before you respectfully and suggest to the Honorable Board that we continue to move in this direction and not let this be the only project, the only sample, the only model of moving forward, but of many more to come. I'd like to give a few minutes to Vice Chairwoman Johnson, if she has anything to share.
Thank you, Chairman Jose. Chairman Jose took everything, all the words from my mouth, so I'll make this short in respect of all of your time. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of these types of relationships, reinforcing these relationships for the mutual benefit of our people. I appreciate you working with us and all involved in drafting this IGA. We look forward to all the good things that can come to this. We look forward, as Chairman Jose says, that this is an example of moving forward and how we can work together. We think about lines and jurisdictions. At the end of the day, we need to think about the betterment of our people and our futures together, so we appreciate you. Thank you. I'd like to hand it over to our Attorney General Schenker.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you. Chairman Jose, Chair Gruhavas, Board, thank you. I'm happy to try to answer any questions if we've got them.
Board Members, do we have any, I'd like to, we have a motion in a second, correct? Supervisor Bronson?
I just, how do you think we can work together better? Do you have any suggestions for us? And the same with the Chair, what should be our next projects? And so I want to listen to what your views are.
I believe, like, we believe in our traditional method of working together. It's really about truly recognizing one another and communication. And when we have these things of differences, that we come to the table and that we work them out. If you want me to start a list of projects, we're going to be here all day.
Why don't you send, since the district I represent includes much of the na, well, the nation in Pima County, why don't you send them to my office and we can start cranking on them?
Definitely. Thank you, Madam Supervisor Bronson, and it's good to see you again. And we do have projects that we can continue to move on, just like in any other district here in Pima County. Our members of the Tonautum Nation live in all your respective areas, and so we'd be happy to also, communication works two-way. We're here, we're here to listen, we're here to talk with you, we're here to communicate and move forward together. Thank you, Supervisor Bronson. Madam Chair.
Any other questions? I would just like to say thank you to everyone who worked on this agreement. You honor us with being here. Congratulations, both Chairman Jose and Vice Chairwoman Johnson. I think we're very excited to be able to move forward on this, and we start every Pima County meeting with land acknowledgement, and at every meeting we say that have served as caretakers of this land, Time of Memorial, and to create equal partner relationships. I think that this is an important step in that direction. And this IGA between our county attorney's office and the nation helps to foster cohesion in our justice system and goes a long way to holding us accountable for how our tribal members of the community receive justice. So thank you very much. And with that, we have a motion in a second, favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, item passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, County Supervisor, thank you very much. Joshua Simho, God bless you and everyone here.
Thank you. If it's okay, can we go ahead and take a five-minute break? And that deserves an applause, by the way. (applause) Okay, we are back in session. Thank you all for indulging a little quick break. If it's okay with the Board, we have staff here on a few issues, so I'd like to go ahead and go to community and workforce development and move items 24 through 27. I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion? Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, yes. I'd like to, for the purpose of voting, no. Hold 26 separately.
Okay. So, we'll move item 24, 25, and 27. And if that's okay with the secondor? Okay, so we modified that. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Those items pass unanimously. Now, we're back on 26. This is the Southwest Nonprofit Housing Corporation to Provide Affordable Housing Gap Funding Agreement. I'll go ahead and move that item. I have a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. All right. And since we're here and have a moment, and thank you to staff who was here. We're gonna, what was the other item? The 40-- can we jump to Development Services? Item 47. This is a hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and for Snderio Rezoning-- repeal of the rezoning policy. So, if there isn't anyone speaking in opposition to this item, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to recommend approval to repeal zoning policy RP 110 Ajo Way Valencia Road. Second. I have a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? The only thing I will say, I continue to be very concerned about the traffic. Very concerned. It takes me a normal, you know, just light traffic on a weekend. It's 10-minute drive and it's a regular 45 minutes. And so, the more development that goes into these areas, the tighter it gets. I don't know if we're looking at doing something on Irvington, but we have to figure something out. We have a lot more development coming in and no real other roadways. So, okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to echo your concerns, I share them, and part of that goes to Ada, because we need, Ajo needs some real improvement.
Right, but we also have Irvington that I think is underutilized.
And then you've got Valencia, they've come, yep.
And we all cross over trying to figure out a better way to get there.
Yeah.
She lives a little farther out than I do, but it's really frustrating, I have to say. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. And then we'll address item 48. This is the rezoning time extension for Tucson Mountain Ranch West Valencia Road, and this is a request for rezoning. There's anyone here to speak in opposition of this item?
Appreciate it.
If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and recommend approval of the five-year time extension subject to modified standard and special conditions.
Second.
So, a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. All right, so now we will jump to our time-certain item at, where are we? Item number--
Madam Chair, right before we do that, can we do 49, just quickly?
Of course.
It's a hearing.
49, yes. This is a hearing to establish Leon Ranch Road. This is resolution number, do we have anyone here in opposition of this issue or this item? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and move approval of resolution number 2023-52. I close the public--
Madam Chair.
Second.
Supervisor Christie.
Has the item moved for a second so I can make a comment?
Yep.
Did you second Supervisor Bronson? Okay, yes. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to acknowledge the Public Works Department's efforts to make this a reality. It means a great deal to the community and to the neighborhood there. It was a long, difficult battle to try to find a remedy, but everybody worked together, and the county administration and the departments involved did a terrific job of expediting the matter and gave a great deal of relief to the families and the neighbors, as well as a very important safety item. So, special thanks to the Department of Public Works for their efforts and for getting this, basically, a long-term dream, a true reality. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Supervisor Christie. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to agenda item number 37. It's a contract real property with American Battery Factory, Inc. Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Chair Gudhava, as you recall, in December of last year, this Board unanimously approved the lease purchase agreement with American Battery Factory. The amendment before you today is to look at a brief continuation so that they can deal with some of the collection of data, et cetera, to make sure that all of the engineering, design, and construction then remains on time. We do have representatives from staff as well as American Battery Factory here today, if the Board has additional questions.
Board Members? Supervisor Christie, did you want to move the item so we can discuss?
I'll move the item.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have to read the background on this, and it just raises eyebrows and concerns because of the wording here. It says, "This amendment will modify the construction commencement date from 270 days from the effective date to 332 days from the effective date. The amendment is needed as a result of delays related to completion of site surveys needed for construction, and will have the secondary effect of aligning the contractual terms of the security deposit." So, basically, we're just re-accommodating the timeline here in order to fulfill the deadlines, but I'm concerned that are we going to have another realignment of this amendment to make it fall into line with some sort of completion dates? And one of the questions I have is, first of all, which jurisdiction is in charge of permitting and plan review?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gudhava, Attorney Deputy County Administrator DeBonis, who's been working on this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie.
Deputy County Administrator DeBonis is going to answer. I know, I'm sorry, Supervisor Christie, there's a delay, so we're sort of talking over each other. Deputy County Administrator DeBonis.
Pardon me, yes. Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, Pima County will be the permitting agency on this, so on lands that the county owns in the city of Tucson, we have an IGA with them that allows us to do permitting and inspection of those projects on our lands. And so, we've done that consistently and with the agreement of the city of Tucson.
Well, Madam Chair--
Supervisor Christie.
That's an interesting situation, because it seems like Pima County has been terrific lately, in the last several years, of expediting these permitting processes, and it's kind of a surprise that things are being held up. It sounds like in the permitting process and, another question I have is, who is in charge of the site surveys for the battery factory? And what are they, and what are they causing, what's causing those site survey delays?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, the surveying work is being done by private consulting firms hired by American Battery Factory. So, Bechtel is their lead engineer. They've been out on-site. They've done preliminary gathering of information. Based on that preliminary data, they have determined that an additional level of geotechnical assessment and surveying is necessary. And so, they have Hilgard Wilson is an engineering firm that is also part of the team for American Battery Factory that is assisting with that topographical and survey information, and they have Terricon, which is a local consulting firm, also part of that team. And I'll just note that in conversations with American Battery Factory, they could have begun preliminary clearing and grubbing work, so removing vegetation to the site, which they would have met the September 2nd timeframe. So, it is in the best interest, we believe, to go ahead and allow the additional engineering data to be done to inform the completion of plans that will then be submitted for review and approval by Pima County. So, we've been in communications with them. We have been coordinating with the Tucson Cactus and Succulent Society, so they are queued up with American Battery Factory to begin doing salvage of plant material out there. So, Tucson Cactus and Succulent Society is a nonprofit in this community that does great work in finding homes for those displaced cacti. So, there is work that has been done in preparation of plans, preliminary grading and grubbing work could have occurred. We've agreed with American Battery Factory that taking a few months longer to put the technical package together for permitting and full onset of construction is the better of the approaches.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonis. I completely understand. I just would warn the Development Services as well as the Battery Factory that these types of delays raise eyebrows and the optics are not good, because what it seems like what we're doing is we're massaging the contract to accommodate potential problems or at least the semblance of construction problems on the part of the American Battery Factory. So, your explanation, I understand. I hope that we're able to work through these delays so as to not give the impression that there's other causes that are in play here for those delays. So, thank you for the explanation, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes 4-0. So, now we'll go back onto the agenda. We're at real property. Items, does there anyone have a concern with moving forward with items 20 through 23?
No.
All right. If not, I'll go ahead and move items 20 through 23, resolution number 202349. 21 is resolution number 202350. Twenty-one is resolution number 202350. Twenty-two is resolution number 202351. And then 23 is the Waterline Eastment.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes for zero. Now we're on, we've moved 24, 25, 26, 27. All right. Twenty-eight is, if it's okay, we can move these together, 28 and 29. This is Racey Associates to provide state legislative representation services. And then 28 is to provide federal legislative representation services. This is a request for a slight increase for a two-year term. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. It was a tie between Supervisor Bronson and Supervisor Heinz, right? Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 30 is, let's see.
Can we do 30 and 32?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, we can do 30 and 32 if there's no objection. So, 30 is to provide employee disciplinary matters, extend the contract term contingency fund. And then 32 is the City of Tucson Amendment for an IGA with the Pima County Attorney's Victim Services Division. I'll go ahead and move both of those items.
Second.
I have a second, I motion and Supervisor Bronson second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes, both items pass unanimously. It, let's see, can we move items 33? Oh, we have a presentation 35, or 36, sorry. Thirty-three and 35? All right, so 33 is the Drexel Heights Fire District to provide data center racks and 35 is Borderline Construction Company, road repair and pavement preservation. I'll go ahead and move both of those items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, those items pass unanimously, 33 and 34. Now we're at 30, or, I'm sorry, 33 and 35. Thirty-six is real property. This is to provide acquisition agreement and warranty deed for 5.31 acres of conservation land for open space purposes. I will move that item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Do we have a little slideshow? We do.
Remind me, Madam Chair, just quickly, did we already do item 34? And I forgot to cross it out.
We did.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. So is someone going to present?
Oh, yes.
Oh, thank you. I was like, go ahead and talk about it, it's fine. Mister Lesher, whoever would like to. Yeah.
Very good. So, as indicated, just over five acres, this is the Land Day property. So, these acquisitions that staff is bringing to the board is a result of the open space funds that you've allocated in the last two fiscal years, so a total of $4 million. This particular parcel is located near Tucson Mountain Park. It's within the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan and Conservation Land System designation of multiple-use management area. Next slide. And so this parcel and its acquisition will add to the boundary of the Tucson Mountain Park. It is a critical wildlife corridor, also provides additional opportunities for trails development within that particular segment. Next slide. So you can see it's the small blue parcel tucked in there around Tucson Mountain Park. It's within the Robles Park or Robles Pass Unit of Tucson Mountain Park. Next slide. And again, will enable us to expand trail access and public access to the site. And then the next two slides are photos. You can take a look at those. So, you can see it's pretty heavily populated with saguaro. Next slide. So it's a wonderful addition to Tucson Mountain Park. And thank you, Board, for your allocation of funds to enable the acquisition.
Thank you. Any questions? I appreciate the slideshow and the pictures. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Where are we?
Thirty-nine.
Skip through, where are we jumping around?
Thirty-nine, Sheriff.
Thirty-eight, right? Thirty, I know, we didn't do it. So, thirty-eight is the State of Arizona, Arizona Land Department to provide commercial lease. This is from the general fund. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. And now we're on 39, Sheriff's Department. Wait, we didn't do this one. We were going to, but we didn't when they were here, sorry. I had a little circle around it. So this is the Autumn Nation to Provide Lawn Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. This is a no-cost three-year term. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. We've addressed, oh, we haven't addressed these. So, items, do we have?
Forty through 45.
Yeah, that was my goal, 40 through 45. Is that okay?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to discuss 41 and 44, 41, 43, and 44.
Forty-three and 44. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move item 40, 42, and 45.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes?
Wrong. No, I'm sorry. No discussion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes, items pass unanimously. Now we're on item 41, Supervisor Christie.
Well, I'll move the item for purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second. Thank you Supervisor Bronson. Now Supervisor Christie, I apologize.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. This, these, I might as well speak to, may I speak to 43 as well because it's very similar?
Sure.
Might save a little time. These are grants to provide for some positions. And my questions are, we have a statement of position vacant summary by department. The county attorney has 89 vacant positions. And this, these grants are designed to provide funding to fill this position on number 41 for drugging and violent crime control. Forty-three is for Arizona Autumn Field Theft Authority. Are these existing positions or how are we, how is it with 89 positions vacant, how does the county attorney plan to fill these positions?
Administrator Lesher.
Does the county attorney have staff to fill these positions? How are they going to be filled?
Thank you, Chair Gudhava and Supervisor Christie. I'm going to ask Chief Deputy, Mr. Brown, to respond.
Chairman Gudhava, Supervisor Christie, these are existing positions. We'd have to look into it further for details about specific efforts to fill these specific positions that are different from regular recruitment and retention.
But, so, just to clarify then, these are existing positions and this is funding to be able to fund those open positions?
Correct, Chairman Gudhava.
Okay. So we're receiving grant funds for open, already existing open positions?
Already existing open positions.
Well, already existing positions.
And we do have.
They're filled.
Are they filled? Or they're?
Chair Gudhava, I'd have to look into the specific positions then.
Oh, I see. So, but Supervisor Bronson believes they are.
I'm not so concerned about accepting the grant money or the mission of what that grant money is supposed to obtain. I'm just curious, with 89 vacancies, how are they going to fill these?
Madam Chair, then the question becomes, if they don't fill them, what happens to the grant? Does the money get returned?
Chair Gudhava, that's something we, Supervisor Bronson, that's something we can look into and give back to the board on.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Is it, Madam Chair, is it worth continuing these two items unless we, until we get some basic?
Well, I never turned out money Supervisor Christie.
Well, that's, that's kind of how I'm feeling, but I'm just looking at the numbers that I'm being provided and I'm wondering if we don't have the people to fill the positions now, how are we going to have the people to fill them once we accept the grant money? So.
Chair Gudhava, we would be happy to.
I think what I would like to ask, Madam Chair, is that the county attorney give some sort of a game plan as to how we want to proceed as far as these positions go as well as the other vacant positions and what, and to, Chair, Supervisor Bronson's point, what's going to happen to the grant money if we don't approve this? So, it just seems like we're taking in all this money for positions that we can't fill. So, what is the purpose of taking in the grant money and how are we going to fill the positions? So.
Chair Gudhava.
I think I made my point.
It is my understanding.
I'll leave it at that and hope for some direction from the county attorney as to her plans as to how she's going to approach this situation.
Administrator Lesher.
I, thank you, Chair Gudhava. I do believe that if the positions are not already filled and this is continuing funding that there is a plan to move forward, I would recommend we accept these dollars and I'd be happy to work with the county attorney to provide an in-depth report to the board.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes unanimously, those 41 and 43. Now we're on 44, Acceptive Environmental Quality to provide, or U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to Provide Pima County Climate Pollution Reduction Plan. I'll go ahead and move the item. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion? Supervisor Christie, you wanted to touch on this or just vote? Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. All right, now we're on item 46, Hearing Agency Change Acquisition of Control Restructure.
Madam Chair, this is a hearing. Yeah, this is a hearing. There's no one in the audience that wishes to address us on this item. Move to close the public hearing and approve the agent change.
Okay, and I have a motion by Supervisor Bronson and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously, I believe. Okay. All right, we have addressed everything else, I think, on the regular agenda. Is that right? Okay. Dun, dun, dun. Okay, now we are on, executive session is for a time certain at noon, and so we're going to go to item four pursuant to ARS 38-431. Oh, oh, that's, both of them are together, I apologize. I'm on it, I'm on it. Okay, item five, utilizing surplus fiscal year 23 general fund ending balance to support affordable housing in fiscal year 24. Supervisor Heinz, you put this item on. I, I would like to, well, I'll go, do you want to move the item or what do you want to?
I think it's probably better to wait until Supervisor Scott is present to use these funds.
Okay, and so we're just going to go ahead and, will you recommend?
To continue it till?
Don't move to continue to the following meeting.
Okay, I'll second. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Wait, that was a motion to continue the item?
Yeah, item number five, to continue it to our next meeting when Supervisor Scott can be here. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that item will be continued, that passed unanimously to our next board meeting. Item six, this is under the county administrator, proposed additional new classification job Was it Administrator Lesher?
Just, Chair Gudhava, there have been, requested some new and additional classifications job titles we would propose, this list as amended.
Okay, and, so.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I just find this kind of interesting and a little imbalancing because my first question is, who prepared this list?
Administrator.
We're discussing, so I'll move the item.
You're going to second for sake of discussion?
Yes.
Did I move it? Who moved it?
I.
Nobody, so you, can you move it?
Yeah.
And I'll second, just for discussion.
Right.
All right, so Super, okay, go ahead Supervisor Christie. Who prepared the list?
We received a list of all these job classifications. I don't see any off-air background on it or any kind of signing off from either the county administrator or HR. Who was it that presented and prepared this list?
Chair Gudhava and Supervisor Christie, what we do have is the item, we requested the addendum simply to place the item on with the proposed new classifications. The board did review the bulk of these at the last meeting. There have been additional requests from both members of the Board of Supervisors as well as discussions with some of the other elected officials, other staff. And since the board has approved all of the other titles and classifications, we have come back with this amended list. And it has been prepared by HR.
Supervisor Christie.
It has been cleared by HR?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, we, normally with these types of situations, we get some kind of a report on the financial impact. We haven't with this.
If I may, Chair.
Do we have any indication what the?
Chair Gudhava and Supervisor Christie, these are all a subset of what the board has approved as it relates to the classification and compensation study and the implementation of that. These are positions that exist in the current, in the current recommendations that you have seen. There have been some adjustments to the titles, to those names, and then we have looked at how we might realign some of the pay grades after additional discussions with, with members, with, again, the elected officials and other directors. We do not have, there is no additional budget impact.
Madam Chair.
Did you have any other questions Supervisor Christie?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I'm sorry, it's just because there's a delay, so Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, I, to Supervisor Christie's point, I've looked at this, but I think what HR owes us is a list of the classifications and how, it's not going to have a budget, well, you can't say really it's not going to have a budget impact, really depends on the department and what the department wants to do with raises. But I would just like to see more clarity. I mean, I'm going to vote for this, I think, but I need much more clarity out of HR on this.
If I may.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Bronson. Our hope is that by getting these approved today, we can move forward with the implementation of those salary adjustments in September so that these individuals do not get delayed because we've requested a change in a name or a title. Happy to provide all the additional background information to you.
So, the only issue I have is I'd like to see the addition of a dispatcher three and a supervisor two in our 911 because there's not a lot of differentiation there. And I had an opportunity to visit and really they're first responders too. And so I really, and thank you to Administrator Lesher who touched base with Sheriff Nanos and said, absolutely. The only issue I have, aside from adding those two, which I would like to do, is the Board of Supervisors, the top three, I don't see the need for that because I do feel like it will make it difficult for some of us with some of our staffing choices if we increase the minimum or increase the maximum. And so if we can pass this adding dispatcher three and supervisor two and eliminating the Board of Supervisors altogether, because we have the discretion in our budgets, both.
Well, that's what I tried to get clarified.
Right.
In the last one, and I was told no.
Okay, well, I just think that we have, we have some discretion in our budget. I know I have a chief of staff, Supervisor Heinz has a chief of staff, Supervisor Scott doesn't, you do. I mean, we, we already have the ability to do this and we have, we're fortunate enough to be able to make a lot of these decisions on our own based on.
The budget.
How, but based on our budget. So we have discretion on our budget to decide.
That was my point. I asked that, I thought I asked it with clarity at our last board meeting.
Oh.
And was told we have to play by the same rules.
Oh, I, I understand. Well, if it's okay, maybe we can table the Board of Supervisors piece and bring, and move forward with the rest of it.
Well, I want to make sure our staff gets some of the raises, but we get clarity, we can bring this back then if we need to.
For the Board of Supervisors staff.
Well, no, bring, do it as is, but then if, get clarity from HR as to what we, meaning board members, have the authority, you know, how, and how that gets signed off on. board members, have the authority, you know, how, and how that gets signed off on, because they're PAFs, there are all kinds of little nuances.
Administrator Lesher, and I, anyone can chime in, but I, my understanding is I'm the one in my office gets to decide these.
Chair Gudihalva and Supervisor Bronson, yes, what, first of all, what this is looking at is changing the titles, the job titles of those positions within the board offices, not the grades. So we would, that would be at the same amount, and yes, what we've looked at, and I've been meeting with not only board members but other elected, elected officials have an opportunity to do what they wish to do within their own budgets, but we ask that they keep generally within the guardrails of the additional HR rules, but what you assign as a salary would be within-
See, that's my problem. I want to call my, my chief of staff, that did not exist with the HR presentation that we got.
And that is, excuse me, Chair Gudihalva, and that's why we've brought this amendment back today. It is our understanding that there were members of the board that wished to have the opportunity to use that job title, and that's why it's on the amended list today.
Okay, but if we want to use it-
You can use whatever-
We can do it now. How does HR fix it?
You can-
Because communicating with HR can be challenged.
Thank you, thank you on that. I think that historically, excuse me, Chair Gudihalva and Supervisor Bronson, you've had an opportunity to call people, chief of staff or whatever you choose as that title. We have others around the county if we use program managers or other specific titles. You call them by a different, or a specific job classification, you can call them as you choose. We did have a request to actually include as a specific job title the items such as chief of staff, so those are there. And then also, again, at the same, at the same pay grade Supervisor Chair Gudihalva, we do have an amended list, as I said, amended, and it includes the 911 dispatch supervisor 2 and dispatcher 3.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I like to bring in young people to my office that maybe are still going through school, you know, want to give them a competitive wage, but I don't want to be hamstrung by any minimums or maximums. And so that's why I'm, I would rather not-
We agree.
Okay, so I would rather not have to deal with all of this, and we, if it's in your budget, you get to do what you want to do. I think that that makes sense.
Yep, exactly.
So I would rather just move-
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I just want to point out that my staff in the directory appears as executive assistants, so-
That needs to change.
The point we're trying to make, if we want to call somebody a chief of staff, we have that right, and that there's a differentiation between a chief of staff and an executive assistant. And that's, that's why we, we work to get these, these three top classifications included.
I mean, I, I have business cards for my chief of staff, it's a chief of staff, it's on his email. I mean, I really do think that it is up to how we classify it in HR, and all of the other positions, you get to make those decisions, and I don't want, I don't want to make decisions for anybody else's office and how they decide to organize their staff.
And just to your point-
Madam Chair.
Hey, just a second Supervisor Christie, Supervisor Bronson, and then I'll go back to you.
No, and that's my point. We don't report to HR, HR reports to us. And we should be able to configure our offices in any manner we see that, so, yeah Supervisor-
Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, to Supervisor Bronson's point, this is pretty easy because we're adding positions, not removing them, so I don't, I don't see why this needs to be such of a magnitude of an issue when it's very clear that this does give us that flexibility.
Well, I guess my issue is adding classifications is usually not what we want to do with classification, and I, I feel like this is overcomplicating just for the five of us, overcomplicating an issue that doesn't need to be there. Like, we should have the discretion in our offices to make these decisions, and if it's just a simple conversation with HR, you as supervisor in your district for your staff get to make the decisions on salaries regardless of, I mean, you can make whatever recommendation goes in, and I don't know that any of us have had any pushback when it comes to salaries that we set for our staff. We can make the decision if we want to for the increases, request that we get the 3% and make the decisions ourselves where it goes, or we can say, no, we don't want the 3% for our staff. We get to make those decisions and have the discretion to do it, and I would rather keep the system, it's working well for me, I feel like I don't see any objection in just keeping it the way it is, and this right here, I feel like makes some, makes it more difficult for us to make some of those decisions.
So we can move forward with this-
Madam Chair.
-get raises, but then, and then we'll massage it at our next board meeting.
Okay, Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I want to have everybody remember that the SEVIS study added hundreds of positions, so-
Yeah, but we're talking literally-
Spend all that money on-
I'm sorry, I don't want to talk over you, I'm sorry. But we're talking just about the five of us and our staff. I just don't want to overcomplicate it for, you know, what, 20 people? I just, I think it's, so I'm comfortable moving forward, taking out the Board of Supervisors positions and making sure that those dispatcher 3 and supervisor 2 for 911 is in, and then if there's any issue that any of us have, we can bring it to Administrator Lesher.
Well, and then to your point, this does not apply to the Board of Supervisors. Make sure HR is very clear about that, except for the raises that we're giving to all employees, because you, we've got September, is it 7th, whatever it is. But are we proceed, well, it's either are, do we proceed and approve, come back on September, our next board meeting, and then just how, what's the best, better part of valor here? Approving this or approving it without the board? If we approve it without the board, then do our board members, do our staff in the offices get raises? That's my concern.
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gudihalva, Supervisor Bronson, I will, let me, we'll make sure they get the raises. It is, I believe that these are simply changes in the job title, not in the grade or the compensation, so they would already be scheduled to get the raises effective September 10.
But then what do we want? We want to change the job titles, so what's the step there?
So if-
Because you don't have those in the job titles.
Feel free, just continue to jump in, yeah.
We have, those, again, those positions existed in the board offices at those grades. There was a request to change the name from the existing, as Supervisor Christie has noted, and others, they are not called on as an official job title, the chief of staff or senior aide or board of supervisors aide, there are other names. We had a request to officially change them in the job titles in the county, which is what you've got before you. It does not change the grades or the amounts.
Okay, so if everyone wants to move forward, I can move forward. It's not, I'm just not going to-
And if we've got problems, we, you'll get them.
We can tweak them, okay. All right, we'll have a mo, do we have a motion a second?
So, Madam Chair, just for clarification-
Supervisor Christie.
...we're voting now to move this list as submitted.
Correct. Yes, as long as the dispatcher 1-
As amended, the amended list.
The amended list. And, yes.
And we're leaving the Board of Supervisor issues alone?
No, we're going to go ahead and move forward with those, because I, I feel like that's an issue that is important to somebody.
Well, what we do is because of the raises, but then we need to come back and make sure what our offices have the titles for our employees that we want, and that needs to show up on the HR.
Yeah, the only concern that I have is I feel like our budgets are, unless there's an objection, are adequate for our purposes, and so my worry is that, you know, if we make these changes, we're going to be requesting some big bumps in, for our staff, and, and then it's going to increase, because remember, the way our, our budgets are set up-
Okay.
Is if one of us, if one of us does, you know, over 30,000, we all move up together, and I just feel like our budgets are substantial. And so I just, I want to make, the reason why I was opposed to this is I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to now increase all of our budgets exponentially because we're, you know, moving up, we're moving up the salary for a chief of staff or aide or somebody. That was my issue, and I felt like we have the flexibility in our budgets to do it, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I just want something in writing that says that.
Okay, and Supervisor Heinz. Oh, and then Supervisor Christie.
It, it sounds to me, based on what I'm hearing, like the compensation side, which we have exclusive authority over, and the nomenclature or label side are decoupled. This is a label but does not necessarily come with any mandatory change in compensation, correct?
Chair Gudihalva, Supervisor Heinz, to the extent that you as the board have the right to pay what you choose to pay, we have not had the official job title that has been requested by some members of the board to include things such as chief of staff and senior aide.
So it could increase our budgets. Supervisor Christie.
Could you restate the motion, please, Madam Chair?
Well, it was for discussion only, so I'm going to make the motion. Well, we need to vote, do we have to vote on the discussion piece? No, well, I think-
I think, I think we did a motion a second for discussion purposes, we could just-
Let's let our brilliant clerk tell us what we should do.
What should we do? Madam Chair, Supervisor Bronson, so we do need a motion of what action you're taking. The first motion was just for discussion purposes only.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
I would rather, I would rather pass the updated version without the Board of Supervisors classifications until we get some clarity on what the budget impact is going to be, because I don't want to increase the county's budget because we made some decisions for our staff. That's all. And I think that we have the capacity in our budgets to do it, so we can decide that. We can look at this and say, I feel like my staff is underpaid, so I'm going to go ahead and increase by this much. If we have the flexibility to do it, I think we should. I don't know.
Supervisor Lesher, County Administrator Lesher, your recommendation at this point?
Chair Gudihalva and Supervisor Bronson, again, I believe you have the capacity to do whatever you choose to do. We can provide clarity about exactly what it does to your budget. This would allow simply for, if it approved and if it is the desire of the board, to have those specific job titles related, to be used by members of the board.
Okay, I'll move the item. I'm going to move the item.
Yeah.
I'll have a second.
I'll second.
We're going to move the, okay Supervisor-
Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, so this, this motion is removing the classifications of chief of staff?
No.
No, it's include-
We're just including it as submitted, and what I will request from our county administrator is some information on the overall budget impact, that our budgets are not incrementally increasing because we're making some staffing choices for salaries. I just think that that's, I think it's a public information issue that we should, this is like the longest conversations we had about class and compensation, and it's only talking about 20 people. So I think it's, the community needs to know if we're asking for more money for our staff and it's going to impact our budgets. So as long as it doesn't, I'm comfortable with, I'm going to go ahead and vote for it because I feel like we're a little split on this issue. Administrator Lesher.
Simply for clarity that it is the, it is the list, the amended list.
Correct, the amended list with dispatcher-
Correct.
-3 and supervisor 2, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. All right, now we are overdue on our exec session. Let me get back there.
Move to convening exec.
Thank you, and this is pursuant to ARS 38-431-03A and 3 for legal advice and discussion regarding Southwest Gas Corporation's offer of judgment. And I, you moved, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. We are going to adjourn into exec and we'll be back. Executive session for two items. One of them is the one I noted, and the other is pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3 and 4, Legal Advice and Direction Regarding Worldview Lease and Operating Agreement. Okay, is that, any objections to those? Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
I sat in your seat. I thought, what did... Okay, we're back in session. I just wanted to make sure Supervisor Christie was on.
Mike, can you see me?
I can't, but I can hear you. So yay, and there's three of us here, so we know that we have a call. So, item three, we'll go ahead and that was legal advice, and we're going to go ahead and move to item seven. This is Southwest Gas Corporation's offer of judgment. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion is second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. And that was executive session three. Executive session four is no action. That was legal advice. All right, and so now we're on the last item, which is item number eight, Regional Wastewater Reclamation Advisory Board to appoint Eric Sewold. I'll go ahead and move the items. Motion is second by Supervisor Bronson. Supervisor Bronson or Chris... Supervisor Bronson, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. When's our next meeting? Wait, I know. Okay, our next meeting is September 19th, which is a Tuesday. And I just want to acknowledge that Jan Lesher is having a birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday to you! We won't sing right now, because nobody wants to hear that from me. But our meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much.